Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning for our city council's study session. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Great.
Here.
Cheetham?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
Mansell?
Here.
Ortega?
She had to work in court this morning.
Stevens?
Here.
Flash?
Here. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number two is the CDBG Advisory Committee update. Representatives from the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Advisory Committee will be present to discuss the committee's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, members of the council. My name is Christine Howe and I'm the CDBG Program Coordinator. I'll be providing the update to the council today. Our Chair and Vice Chair send their regards, but they were unable to attend. They did review this presentation and provide their input on it as well. So the Advisory Committee is in charge of essentially reviewing and making recommendations to the council on the adoption of our required consolidated plan, which is our five-year plan that the Department of Housing and Urban Development requires of Community Development Block Grant entitlement communities. And they're also charged with overseeing and making recommendations to the council on how we'll spend our annual entitlement through our annual action plan. We meet on the third Tuesday of the month and are composed of seven members, with 51% of our membership from our designated target neighborhoods. Those are the Neighborhood Association neighborhoods that work with Neighbor Works Pocatello. As you can see, we only have one vacancy on the committee at this time, but do have an applicant that's going to come before this council, I believe, at their next regularly scheduled meeting. So we're hoping to fill that position and have a full committee, which would be a first in several months for us, so we're pretty excited about that. As I mentioned, the Advisory Committee reviews and votes on how we're going to spend the funding that we are given by HUD, in particular related to our public service funding allocation and our public facilities funding allocation. So typically in August, we'll have what's called our technical assistance meeting and invite our local nonprofits and public service agencies to our meeting to learn about different things that CDBG can fund. And then those folks that are interested will submit applications for funding, which the Advisory Committee will review and vote on to recommend approval to the council to spend our annual entitlement allocation. In addition, the Advisory Committee assists with project oversight, so if we have major changes to projects during the course of seeing them through, or if we need a change in funding, they'll provide guidance and oversight there, as well as some of our fair housing activities. So some of the accomplishments we were able to achieve in our 2021 program year, I'll go through those in the next several slides. Our program year runs from April 1st to March 31st, so not quite lined up with the city fiscal year, but we've been able to make it work. And at any one time, we may have several program years going with funding still available. So you'll see in future slides that we still have some program year funding from 2018, 19, to 2021. We're technically currently in program year 22, and we have an approved spending plan that this body reviewed and voted on. However, HUD has not released our entitlement allocation at this time. They did release the federal budget, and typically they give us that number. I think the statutory date is February 15th. It's now nearly May 15th, and they have not given us that money. So we anticipate it potentially going down slightly because the overall CDBG budget for the country was reduced. But this is our projected spending plan for next year, and we will decrease proportionally if the entitlement comes in lower than anticipated. But as you can see, in program year 21, we received just under $462,000, and those funds went toward housing, facilities, infrastructure, and public services. So I'll go through each of those categories and how we use the entitlement. I should note that that entitlement is basically in line with the previous years. We had a higher entitlement in the early 2000s and then saw a dramatic, not dramatic, but a decrease in our annual funding awards. So we certainly could use more CDBG funds, but as the federal budget's reduced and as more entitlement communities come on, we've seen that number shrink over the last several years. So it's important to, you know, stress, it's important if you're speaking with folks about the CDBG programs to stress how important it is for us to have those funds, because they do provide a lot of service to the community. So in 21, for our housing accomplishments, we continued our citywide renewal program. This is our internal housing rehab loan and grant program that we operate in-house. We have our property rehab specialist position who is primarily responsible for this, seeing the projects through. In addition, our grant compliance analyst will administer the program. And in 21, we were able to complete four loan projects, and those were for repair items that are of a more severe nature in homes, replacing HVAC furnaces, electrical water heaters, things like that. We also completed 19 grant projects. These small grants are limited to $3,000 each, based on our policies and procedures, and are also for repairs in homes. And we were able to do 19 of those, as I mentioned. In addition, we partner with Neighbor Works Pocatello, and they do a mobile home repair program. So we fund some personnel time for that, that's the service delivery, and the $3,000 grants on those projects. So they were able to complete 18 projects and do mobile home repairs. Typically, Neighbor Works, if the projects exceed 3,000, they'll be able to provide an unsecured loan to those folks as well, so they can stretch those funds a little further and assist folks who would not be able to receive traditional lending for those types of repairs. Yes, sir.
What's your loan recovery rate?
Loan recovery rate? Not, we, there are either partially deferred or fully deferred loans that have a term of between 10 and 20 years. And so we receive automatic, you know, payments every month on the loans that are out there, and that comes into the accounts as program income. So we've seen a lot of loan payoffs in recent years. It's due upon transfer of the property, and we typically have a first or second position on the mortgages if we have the loans. The credit committee will, there's a credit committee that is composed of city staff, and they review and our policies, and they approve the loans based on our policies and procedures, which require certain debt-to-income ratios. So, and those that are unable to make the monthly payment, they will receive a late fee after a certain amount of time. But we don't, we haven't seen a lot of, you know, late payments and things. It typically, because it's set on that automatic draft, we get the funding every month. So I think at this time, we have just about 20 loans out there that we receive monthly income on. And all that income goes back into the CDBG programs, which is a HUD requirement. We're supposed to spend it as soon as it comes in on the HUD programs. In addition to the renewal and rehabilitation programs, we were also able to partner with Neighbor Works Pocatello and provide a grant toward their low-income housing tax credit application that they were actually awarded last December. And this is for the construction of senior housing over on South Fifth. So this was an exciting opportunity to provide a match toward their application as a grant, and we're pleased we were able to do that in a short timeframe. They had applied for this two years prior and were not awarded the LIHTC, but they were successful in this third round, which was, which was great for the community. So they'll be able to provide housing for seniors who are at 60% or below of area median income, and I've preserved some of those units for those at risk of being homeless as well. So this will be a great new development for the community to provide much-needed housing for seniors.
I was down South Fifth in that neighborhood, and I noticed a whole bunch of mobile homes parked just south of Colonial Funeral Home. Is that going to compromise that senior development? Because it's just across the street. I don't know if they're going to go in there. I don't know why they're there. I don't know what's being developed, but I saw three to five leased mobile homes staged, it looked like, to be placed.
My understanding is that Neighbor Works owns the lot, and it's a vacant undeveloped lot at this time.
Yeah, but I'm talking about across the street from Neighbor Works. You know, they're going to be putting in apartments, but are we compromising it? And Bengal, the Bengal apartments are back there, and I just was wondering if mobile homes are allowed in that area. Maybe it's something we should check out.
So there's a, I don't know if you know where he's talking about. So Bengal Creek Apartments are south of this empty lot, and then Corneal, is it Corneals?
No, Colonial.
Colonial Funeral Home is just to the north of us, just right there. I think they've had one of those there for years, and I think it's a place where whomever owns that property, that vacant lot, sells those mobile homes, and they bring them in before they're sold, and then they're out.
There's three to five.
But I'm not certain of that. I think it'd be a good one for us to reach out and find out what they are.
They're just really stacked in there. It doesn't look like they're set up for display.
They just, they just recently, I think in the last two months, I think, were put in there, but I am not sure. So Brent, will you look at that?
There's more there.
Jim, will you look at it? And so, yeah, I was, I was wondering, I was wondering the same thing the other day, what those were there for, so.
I just, you know, I know that we need mobile homes for people to live in, because it's more economical, so. But just to randomly go in on top of somebody or whatever, I would, I don't remember seeing anything on it.
Yeah. Meryl walked in here with a purpose, do you may know?
An answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Meryl Quill, Public Works Engineer for the city. The mobile homes that are across there right now, the other part of planning is working on that, Matt Lewis. And, sorry, I ran down the hall. Give me a breath.
I got, I've got the answer.
But, well, I just wanted to make sure it was, that, and that was put in before, and what those are, they're in there to be repaired and everything, and to brought out. That's why they're staged so close together. But Matt Lewis has been working on that and moving through there. That was there before, that the Park Meadows, the, what we're talking about with Neighbor Works there. And Neighbor Works is moving forward fairly fast, and they're getting ready to submit plans.
Okay, sounds great. So, thank you, Meryl. Jim, you don't have to go out there.
So in addition to housing, we also fund public infrastructure improvements, and this is where our sidewalk, our citywide sidewalk program comes into play. We provide funding to individuals who apply for sidewalk repairs and, or replacements, rather, as well as can conduct sidewalk replacement on low to moderate income areas. So in 2021, we were able to replace and install and complete two projects, the first of which was an individual project on North Harrison Avenue, and the second was the connector under the Benton Overpass. So there hadn't been a formalized sidewalk there previously, and this project was able to install an ADA ramp and make, and remove that architectural barrier to connect to the recently installed pedestrian walkway down in that area. As you can see, we have allocated sidewalk money over the last several program years and still have quite a bit remaining. And because of that, the city's been working on stretching those funds by hopefully engaging a contractor to have on hand to address certain areas that we identify as the highest priority that meet the program parameters. As I mentioned, they must be in a low to moderate income area, and that is defined by HUD's most recent census data, which I believe goes through ACS, the American Community Survey, 2015. So it seems rather outdated, but that is the data that we're required to use by HUD. And the sidewalk replacement, it has to be replacement instead of, you know, just grinding or repair, because that wouldn't qualify under the HUD guidelines as well. But we're pretty certain there are plenty of sidewalks that meet the criteria that we'll be able to spend this funding on, and hopefully can start doing it in a more efficient manner with CDBG as a match to other available funding as we progress. Yes.
Couple of questions. One, what is the projected timeline for getting those funds turned into concrete?
Yeah, we're, currently, we have a bid prepared to engage a contractor that we're hoping will hit the streets at the end of the month, and we'll have them onboard for a year to be able to go out and hit those target areas. Staff has already been engaged with the help of the GIS department. We were able to put together a program so that staff can go out and analyze the condition of the sidewalks in our targeted areas. So we were able to overlay our low to moderate income areas, proximity to schools, bus stops, and so.
So by September, by December?
Hopefully sooner than that. Hopefully this summer we'll have projects underway.
Okay. And then is there, are, in those kinds of areas, in those kinds of projects, is there, are you engaging the landlords so that they've got some skin in the game as opposed to just coming in and giving them a freebie?
Our goal right now is to target residential areas.
Right.
And, you know, avoid maybe the large multi-unit developments at this time.
Right, but I'm thinking of a particular house I was visiting a couple of weeks ago, and there's a horrific heave in the sidewalk. And it's rental. And so I'm wondering whether we're simply, you know, where we, where we, the city, or you, or whomever determines, okay, this is an area that we're going to target, so essentially all those homeowners and/or landlords get a freebie where somebody else with an equal problem who lives in another area has, you know, doesn't get a freebie. It's their responsibility theoretically at least to fix the sidewalk. So I'm just wondering what the plan is to, number one, create an equitable situation among neighborhoods, and B, get, you know, incentivize versus maybe just give a freebie to property owners.
Yeah, we can consider your suggestion of having them potentially pay into it. What the goal of the CDBG funds are to address our low to moderate income residents.
Right.
And we've found that through our various CDBG programs, they cannot afford a match component. And so because these funds are targeted toward those folks, I don't anticipate that they would be able to provide funding toward a sidewalk replacement. As you can see, the cost is just over $20,000 for an individual project, and that is driven by the Davis Bacon wage rates that we are required to pay by the federal government.
Right.
So I think for this program, because we're targeting our low to moderate income residents who can't afford to do the replacement, that's the goal of the HUD funds.
So if you get to a piece of sidewalk in front of a rental, then you skip it?
Well, it likely, if the individual doesn't income qualify, or they're not in a low to moderate income area, then we wouldn't be addressing that area.
I understand, but, but let's pretend there's a stretch of six houses. Two of them are owned by landlords, they're rented by low-income people. Do those houses, does the sidewalk in front of those houses get replaced?
It could potentially, if the area's a low to moderate income area.
Right, and the landlord pays nothing, even though the landlord is not, I mean, that's a business. The landlord is not necessarily, you know, the low-income occupant.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
You also got to consider who the beneficiaries are.
No, I understand.
And who's walking the sidewalk.
Right, part of the CDBG funding is to remove architectural and mobility barriers.
Right.
So we're looking at contiguous stretches that would be maybe a block to
Right.
Put in ADA ramps to provide accessibility to bus stops for schools.
Right.
For those, you know, folks that can't.
I understand that. I mean, I understand the purpose, I understand the focus. I'm talking about, you know, stretching dollars by engaging landlords. And I'm also talking about equity among landlords, because at the same time somebody's getting a freebie, another resident, let's not even say landlord, and while one resident might be getting a freebie just by chance, luck of the draw, another resident could be getting cited for not fixing their sidewalk, and they could be equally low-income. And I'm just trying to understand what the equity.
I think Brent McLean, Planning Development Service Director. I think, to answer your question, one of the things we're doing in the process is we're looking at those owner-occupied houses and making those a priority. I do recognize that landlords may or may not be low to moderate income. They typically will be housing those individuals in these areas. But we also are looking at mobility across the board. And these funds aren't meant to stretch across the city entirely, and they aren't meant to necessarily even provide equity. We're doing the best we can with what we have. And if we do run into an area that has a predominantly landlord-based owner, or landlord-occupied or owned properties, they won't rise to our priority levels. Now, if there's a single house in there, for the purpose of mobility, it may be worth replacing a chunk of sidewalk in front of that property. Sure. And, you know, if someone has needs for sidewalk replacement, they can apply to this program on their own to have sidewalk addressed in their situation.
Right.
So it, in that sense, it is equitable. Those funds are available to anyone within those LMI areas to access, but what we're trying to do is be more proactive with the funds and actually use them.
Sure.
And so if we do come to an area that has lots of rentals, it may not rise to the priority level, and we can talk with the landlord about fixing those sidewalks and stretching those dollars and making them be responsible for those things.
So what happens if there's a tenant with a mobility issue? Can the tenant apply to have the landlord's sidewalk fixed?
I don't know.
I don't believe so.
So how, what would be the process, then, for that tenant who has to?
The tenant would need to work with their landlord to get it fixed, and it's up to the city to, you know, we have code enforcement violation and issues that, that if they don't fall within the LMI criteria, they can't use these funds. Now, if we determine that that stretch for mobility issues is worth spending the funds, and we can use those funds even if it's in front of a rental property.
Right, because a renter clearly, you know, getting their landlord cited for a code violation, especially with the rental housing, would not probably be
Probably would go well.
A wise move. So I'm just trying, I'm just, I'm just trying to see.
It's a dance, and it's a balancing act. And we do the best we can, look at each case by case, and just determine what's the best solution.
Now, I am aware that apparently one of the ways that code violations citations get issued is if there's a complaint. And so could a tenant complain or have a neighbor complain in order to try to, you know, maintain their capacity to have housing?
Absolutely. Anyone can complain about any property.
Okay.
If there's a code violation. Now, we don't handle the sidewalk code violations
No, I know.
In our department, but if there was a complaint for a sidewalk that was
Right, it would go to engineering.
If it was going to engineering, they would deal with it and go through the proper process.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Roger?
I think we need to really work at not having any money left on the shelf, because I think concrete is going up dramatically, and we probably could have done, just off the top of my head, another 25% if we would have been doing it categorically every year.
Yeah, I agree with you, Roger, and that's kind of why Christine and I have been working on trying to get this money spent. And we just want to use it. We have it, we don't want it sitting in a pot for what? Let's use it.
It's losing its value sitting in our shelf.
Exactly.
Is there a deadline that these funds must be used by in a given program year?
Sort of. HUD has a timeliness requirement that you have to spend a certain percent of your entitlement plus, I think, one and a half times. So we're not at jeopardy of not meeting the timeliness, but we do spend the oldest program year funds first and then draw down as we go. But as was mentioned, time is money, so we do want to get it, get it out and operationalized.
Interesting they want us to get it spent soon, but they don't want to get us the money on time.
That's got to work for you.
That is what it is. Thank you, Brent. Go ahead, Christine.
So the next category that we were able to fund that we completed in 2021 was our public facility improvements. And this is funding that goes toward public facilities, as the name implies, but essentially our agencies will apply for funding at that, you know, during that technical assistance period and be awarded for improvements on their facilities. So as you may be aware, we have a five-year agreement with Aid for Friends to do partial acquisition toward their new shelter facility that they opened last year. So that is a $50,000 commitment that we have through program year 2025. We're also able to replace the roof on the Bannock Youth Foundation's youth shelter, and we've, excuse, and that project is actually currently underway, hopefully to be completed tomorrow. So that's happening right now. And then St. Vincent de Paul applied for some facility improvements to put an ADA accessible ramp on the front of their facility and improve their parking lot, which, if you're familiar with the space, has a large dip from a truck apron that impairs mobility as well. So that project is out to bid currently, and we're anticipating that will be done this And our next category is public services. This funding is capped by HUD at 15% of your CDBG entitlement and 15% of the previous year's program income, which is nice that we have that additional program income percent we can use, so we can provide a little more public service funding. We've noticed an increase in applications over the last few years from our local nonprofits, and so it's been fortunate that we've been able to fund a little bit more, but the demand is always well over what we have available. We were able to fund Aid for Friends for their bus ticket program, where they provide PRT tickets to those folks going to interviews, you know, looking for jobs, going to work, as well as a case manager for their facility, which provides one-on-one client services. In addition, St. Vincent de Paul received an award toward their social services for the needy program, and they provide small stipends and assistance to folks who need maybe assistance with the utility bill or part of their rent or other maybe unanticipated expense that crops up. New Day Products, recently, their transportation service was eliminated, and so they've had to provide transportation for their staff both to New Day and out to the facilities that they work on, the various rest stops around the county. And so their transportation services, we were able to fund personnel and recoup some of that funding for them, because it's now costs that they're fully realizing. And Salvation Army also provided rental assistance for folks. Rental assistance is limited to a short-term basis by HUD, but they were awarded $10,000 toward that. And all of these programs have to serve our clientele base, so the low to moderate income folks or the presumed benefit classes.
Yes, sorry, I have another question, and if somebody else remembers, I'm just curious. Seems to me a couple of years ago, there was discussion of creating a nice landscaped parking lot across from New Day? And I don't, I don't believe, having driven by there, not specifically thinking, but I think I would have noticed. Do you know?
Yes, so they were awarded the funds for that parking lot initially, but we transferred the funds to the transportation services instead. I met with Terry about the parking lot. Based on the use of the facility, the parking lot would not have necessarily qualified under HUD's guidelines for a public facility. The facility needs to be open to the public, and typically things like the senior activity center, or if you had a community center, or a shelter, those are considered public facilities. And so we were concerned that we couldn't meet the HUD guidelines with that parking lot, and this need for the transportation services cropped up, so we were able to transition those. those funds for New Day.
When you say their transportation was eliminated, what does that? I mean, I understand it means it went away, but what exactly does that mean?
There was a service, I can't remember the name. It was, you know, an Idaho transportation service, basically a bus service, like a large van service, that would provide transportation to folks around the city to get to New Day Products and get home. And that was, Pocatello was removed from their rotation.
Okay, all right. So that wasn't something that occurred at the local level? That was a decision from above?
No, I believe it was a private, it was a nonprofit entity.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. In addition to our regular entitlement funds, we also received CARES Act money. So we funded two programs through this, using the two tranches of funding. The first was rental assistance, and the next was public service assistance. As you can see, we've been steadily spending the rental assistance money, and our public service money was awarded to applicants, which were our local nonprofits. So, sorry. So some of the nonprofits we, and local agencies we awarded were the Free Clinic, Salvation Army, United Way of Southeast Idaho. And so they've been spending those funds on activities that respond to, prepare for, and prevent the coronavirus pandemic. For rental assistance, we've been able to assist over 100 individuals and provide up to six months of consecutive rental assistance if they meet the income qualifications and can demonstrate an impact, our loss of income due to COVID.
How does your rental assistance program dovetail with the Housing Alliance and everything that they do? Or is it completely just you're running your track and they're running theirs?
Our rental assistance program is separate, but they have been able to refer clients to us. We've, you know, been in close contact with them as part of our outreach to get folks to apply. So we've had a handful of folks who've been eligible through that. They do have to demonstrate that loss of income due to COVID. One of the biggest issues we've seen with that program is we'll have folks call us who are on a fixed income, you know, social security disability, and they have no demonstrable loss of income. They just don't have sufficient income. And so we can't assist them through the CARES Act money. In addition, we administer the Lead Safe and Healthy Homes program. As you know, our previous grant closed out in September, but we were successful in applying for a 2021 grant. So that grant period began in November, and we've been steadily moving along with that program. We received just over $2 million in the lead hazard control work. We received an additional $577,500 in what's called Healthy Homes Supplemental Funding, and this is a new part of the program. And we provided the grant match through the CDBG program. Some of those accomplishments to date include conducting trainings for our local contractors. Some of the shortfalls of the program last year were, or last go-around were that we did not have enough qualified contractor firms. So we brought in trainers to ensure that we had enough qualified contractors locally. We also conducted what's called an EPA RRP training for them as well. Those are both requirements under EPA and HUD for the contractors.
Christine?
Yes.
Did that help? I'm just curious.
Yes, absolutely. We saw a lot more interest than we previously had, and we have, I think, at least five contractors who are, you know, ready to do Pocatello jobs. So we've already bid out one project, and it's underway currently today. So that should hopefully conclude over the weekend. But there was a lot of interest, and even the other communities like Boise and Idaho Falls, they've been looking for local training to get contractors certified. Typically, these take place in Colorado or California, so folks have to travel pretty far to get their contractor certified. So by bringing it here, we were able to get a lot of interest in, and hopefully we'll have a nice pool to pull from.
And it addressed the issues that we were having with contractors who didn't really understand the way the program works or what they were supposed to do or not do?
Yeah, the training was pretty comprehensive. The worker training is a two-day training, and then the supervisor training is a four-day training. And a lot of them attended both, which was great for the contractors to be able to have more supervisors on staff, because that's just a more in-depth, you know, level of the qualifications and requirements. And just seeing the job that's going on currently, you know, we've been taking photos of the progress, and, you know, everything is taped, and it looks very professional. And, you know, even today with the high winds, they may not be able to go out and do the work because it would blow the lead dust around. So we feel pretty confident that the trainers that came in were really, really well-versed and did a good job of educating the contractors, just based on even this first experience.
Great.
It was definitely valuable, and the grant, we built that into the grant. So we were able to pay for a lot of that.
Thanks.
And the last component here is our consolidated plan. This was presented to council and approved at the end of January, early February. And this is just kind of the snapshot, looking forward at our five years of funding. As you can see, our main program areas there are the facilities improvements, infrastructure services, housing, and our program administration. Our facilities and improvements will continue to be things like the homeless shelter and any small repair projects on a public facility. Infrastructure, the main focus there is on our sidewalks, mobility, accessibility, ADA compliance. Services will continue to assist our local agencies and nonprofits. And housing was our highest concern. So we're going to continue to do programs such as the renewal program, work with NeighborWorks on mobile home grant repairs, and acquisition and demolition as properties arise to do infill housing.
So you continue with the people that are repairing the mobile homes at that place I was talking about.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, we probably have some referrals we could make. So as I mentioned, here are some examples of the types of projects that we'll be funding through the future program years. These all must be approved through an annual action plan. So our program year 2022 action plan was approved with the consolidated plan. We're just pending submission to HUD until we get that funding allocation. But program years 23, 24, and so on will go through the advisory committee and then come to the body for approval.
A comment.
Sure.
With housing being such an issue in our community, it might behoove some cross-pollination between what you do and the Housing Alliance, because I understand they've got a lot of vouchers that aren't being claimed because a lot of landlords just don't want to have the hassle. And maybe if we could remediate that somehow and educate more landlords on how to do that, and I don't know if it's a rental disparity, what they can collect outside of what can be paid, I don't know. But it seems like the housing issue is something that's really crunching our low to moderate income people more so than others.
Yeah, we've got a pretty good working relationship with them and other executive director, Sarah Van Cleve. So one thing we're doing is partnering with them on some fair housing education. So they're starting to create a series of fair housing education for landlords and really create a landlord working group so that they can understand the benefits of renting on those fair market rate vouchers, the Housing Choice voucher program. Because as Sarah has mentioned, that's, you know, once one landlord comes offline, that eliminates, you know, 120 potential units that folks could rent using their housing choice vouchers. So we're assisting them through the fair housing bucket of funds for that program. And in addition, we've provided them with assistance in our program year 22 plan to do rental repair and rehab, because a lot of, what she's told us is a lot of the landlords have units that aren't quite rental-ready. But if we could do the repairs and provide some kind of incentive, then they're likely to fix the unit and get it out so it can be filled.
And I think some of them are put off by the idea that they have to be lead-free, and they don't know how to go about it. There'd be another coordination that could happen there if we could get in and help them to remediate a property so it qualifies for their program.
Yeah, we could definitely look into that. I believe, you know, our lead program are limited to units, less than five units, on the lead hazard control work. But there's certainly resources out there. And if a landlord had a unit, you know, four or fewer, then we could potentially qualify them for the program.
Last time Sarah came in front of us, she discussed specifically that part of the problem, the big part of the problem is discrimination. These people are being discriminated against because they're receiving the vouchers. They won't, these landlords won't consider it guaranteed income. They look at them as though, I don't know, they're less than legitimate. And so one of the things I remember Josh bringing up, that we could pass a nondiscrimination ordinance. So, but that was a few months ago, and that hasn't come before us again. So maybe, Brian, we could get that on an agenda so that we could help not just Christine but Sarah in not just educating these landlords, but also making it against the law, in this city at least, to discriminate against people who have guaranteed income as a result of those vouchers.
Well, we have a nondiscrimination ordinance, and the state also has, and it is, in fact, against the law. So if that is the case, then, yeah, it already is against the law.
Is the nondiscrimination against renters specifically, or is it just the general, let's be nice to everybody?
Jared Johnson, City Attorney. So, yeah, after that discussion, I definitely looked into that to prepare or consider the preparation of a draft ordinance for your consideration. What I learned was that the rent controls that Idaho has, or that Idaho prohibits, I should say, do not allow us to dictate what property managers consider as income, what they charge for applications. There's just no way to do anything. We have nondiscrimination ordinances in place in Idaho and in the city of Pocatello. Those are general, as it applies to housing and a lot of other things. But as far as the specifics that were talked about at that meeting, it's not something we can do pursuant to state law.
Can't do that at all. Oh, I hadn't heard, I hadn't heard anything.
Yeah, they already had some ordinances about rent control, and then they passed, or not ordinances, but codes. And then they passed additional code that said that those types of decisions are up to the property managers and can't be controlled by any government entity.
And it was a big topic of discussion at the legislature this past session about application fees and fair practices and all sorts of things. So they could pass some legislation. It didn't pass this time, but the legislature is considering those things, and that could pass. A lot of the bills seemed very targeted to Boise and specific issues that were happening in Boise that don't necessarily happen here or in other cities. So that was part of the problem.
Correct. Boise has in fact repealed some of their ordinances based on the prohibition against rent controls and rent regulation.
Okay. Well, then, I had no idea that we already, that they had passed, that there was an ordinance, basically a code that said we can't pass an ordinance. So sorry about that.
And I didn't know that answer at the time when Sarah was here, but I looked into it after that, and it's a no-go unfortunately for us.
But we'll continue to work with landlords and continue to work with people to help this situation and so on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I did want to point out, I was trying to think, last week or the week before last, there was an event at the Veterans Memorial Building. It was hosted by United Way, but a lot of people, I mean, a lot of organizations were there, including Housing Alliance and Community Partnerships and Bannock Youth Foundation, veterans organizations. And it was aimed at landlords and helping with the housing issue. And it was well-attended with good information. So there are efforts happening right here in our community for that very purpose.
There's a lot of people.
Yeah, and I think Housing Alliance actually put that together. I mean, that was their.
They were partnering with United Way.
Right, right.
Thank you, Jared.
Yeah. And I'm wondering, because, you know, there are usually two sides to an equation, and landlord/tenant is frequently an interesting equation. And people being people, we all tend to look at the world through our own lenses. And so I'm wondering if, because I have a number of friends who've owned rental properties over the years, and, you know, tenants can be problematic because they don't necessarily see that their behavior has any impact beyond them. And I'm wondering if there's any possibility of also, and maybe this already happens, helping tenants understand that their behavior also encourages or discourages landlords, you know, from taking tenants who have certain financial or social characteristics. Because, you know, it doesn't take for, let's say, a casual landlord as opposed to, you know, someone who's, you know, has an entire business focused on property. It doesn't take many bad experiences for them to very humanly make stereotypical decisions about who they will and won't rent to. And so I'm wondering if, you know, we're focusing on the landlord side of the equation, justifiably, but I think it's also equitable to look at it from their perspective and understand that maybe some education for the clients, tenants, would also be helpful to the bigger situation.
Yeah, a lot of that comes out of our Fair Housing Activity funding. We do, we just, Fair Housing Month was in April, and we completed our social media campaign to provide education on what the protected classes are and tenants' rights and landlords' rights and things of that nature. But as part of our CARES Act money, we're funding the Housing Alliance to conduct what they're calling their Ready to Rent program. And that is an education program for tenants so that they can be that, you know, stellar applicant when they submit an application for a location to rent. So I think that program has been, it's kind of like nationwide, and they're planning to implement that in the next few weeks and essentially ready several of their tenants so that they can get into housing and, you know, basically better present their own resume, so to speak, as a tenant. Because that is an issue. A lot of tenants don't know which documents they'll need to have ready to apply. There's several fees associated with the applications, or, you know, they may not understand how to kind of pursue the rental. So I think that program will help in many facets to assist them in getting into housing.
I think her point is that there are landlords that feel abused as well. And because they feel abused, for example, I have an acquaintance that's getting rid of the rental racket, he calls it. And he's doing it because he just doesn't want to spend his time fixing things up that people are destroying. Consequently, what's going to happen in a couple of the units he's selling is he was in it for a lot less than what the new owner will be in it. Therefore, rent will have to increase to perform on the investment the new landlord has versus what his investment was. Because it's a tight market right now, he can get rid of these places. He's going to quadruple his money probably from the time he was in it. And so he's recouping some, but he doesn't want to have to deal with the hassle of rehabilitating properties that people abuse. And that's his perspective, and I've heard it from other people as well. And so somewhere along the line, we've got to make people understand that there's normal wear and tear, and if they go beyond it, then they're really hurting the market for everybody else that's similar to them.
Christine, it sounds to me like if you work with housing and stuff, and it sounds like the education progress is going on and that's happening, that will definitely help and stuff. But I think we're kind of getting off the CDBG thing and onto rentals and stuff.
They're the most vulnerable group, the CDBG people.
So, yeah, we can move on if you can.
Yeah, a number of our programs are starting to address that, so.
Super. Thank you.
All right. If there aren't any other questions, that concludes my update.
I just want to say thank you because not just for everything you, but how you do it. I mean, you're very, you're always prepared. You know what's going on. You've got your finger on the pulse of it all, and it's just very impressive every time you sit here.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 3, which is Bannock Development Corporation BDC Update. Mia Kate Kennedy, Bannock Development Corporation CDBG Executive Director will be present to give the council an update of CDBG's, CDBGs, of BDC's activities and achievements.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Mia Kate Kennedy, the first CEO of Bannock Development Corporation. And Bannock Development has, oh, I did want to say too, I really appreciate the work of CDBG on behalf of our community in helping our city in economic development. The look, health, facility and wellbeing of our city is very important to economic development. So we're working closely with them, probably more closely than we have in the past. So we appreciate them and the work they do. Since I sat in front of you last time, a lot has changed for Bannock Development. Bannock Development has reorganized under my direction to have a stricter focus on economic development and projects throughout our city. Obviously, after COVID, we had a very difficult time figuring out where we needed to be and go to be able to bring businesses and jobs and also development to our area. This is not only just a statewide group of initiatives, but also something that we had to take on in lieu of just dropping businesses here and trying to bring more jobs. So Bannock Development went from a one-time high of 38 voting members. We are now down to nine. That board is the single most voting board. Those members currently, due to the new restructure, will serve between three and one years, but eventually all will serve two years. We do, are trying to put people on the board who do have some time and availability to work on economic development initiatives and maybe have some experience or expertise in those different areas as well. So that's really exciting. Along with that, we also have, we are now currently, we are a C6. We will be adding a C3 arm, which is very important. Number one, it allows us to save money on many, many things with the organization. And outside of that, it also allows us to apply for grants from INL and accept those. Currently, we're excluded from many of those because we are a C6. I have about 10 years' experience in C6s. I know I've visited with you, Chris, and C6s are a great organizational option for a 501. However, when you're really trying to do grants and be able to do funding for different things, a C3 is a more functional arm. In lieu of changing everything, we do also have brand-new bylaws, which Holly Troxel prepared for us. And those have all been approved, so we are working on those new bylaws. We, they also determined that it would probably be better for us as well in some of the funding areas to become a C3. And we will work with them and continue to work with them to get that to happen. Rather than changing the entire organization over, it's faster for us. And I like to keep moving and move the needle. So we just decided to go this route for now. We have had unbelievable amounts of projects just in this year alone. I've taken one day off since I've been here, and I do need to catch up on my vacation. But we are really in the busy season. Anybody who's come and spent time with me knows that we are spending numerous hours every day just trying to get everything done. I have hired an executive assistant, which has been amazing. But we have changed our focus. So that's one of the things I want to focus on with you guys, is what we actually have done to really pivot towards economic development. One of the first things we've done is we have, we have worked more closely with Brent and his team to have more of a reciprocity of what's happening if a company or a business or somebody calls the city. We're made aware and vice versa. So we're working together collaboratively more, which has been phenomenal. Brent's team and himself have been so helpful. Oftentimes, I will get a business that wants to come in and they have so many questions. So not only do we have our strategic partner advisors at Bannock Development now, but we also are working with all the city planners and Brent and his team so that we can have answers right away, which is super important because that way they're not getting away from us going somewhere else. And in this market, everybody wants to go somewhere right away. So that's really important for us as well. One of our things this year as well, and with our restructure, is we've decided to have a specific strategic plan. And that strategic plan currently, this 2020 year, includes Northgate and what's happening there, including a huge housing project, which is currently moved along to the next stage. We're working on industry and industrial transportation, logistics and distribution. The college is currently adding those programs to their repertoire of programs. We are working alongside of them to be able to get the workforce that we need for those industries. Obviously, that's a big thing. Retention and expansion is huge for us. I get a call about every day from a company that's already here that is worried about workforce or being able to be competitive with a business that we might bring in. So that we are not swapping employees here to go here and thus causing one of those current of the two employers to go have a problem. That's statewide. That's also an initiative that's nationally being looked at. I've recently, just yesterday, night, last night, came back from Boise where I worked with Wendy Seacrest. Wendy Seacrest runs the Council for Workforce. They are working on a TPM initiative. That initiative looks at workforce and what programs can happen in each region that will help the current employers and any potential new project employers. So obviously, it's very important for us to work alongside of them. I went there to lobby for Region 5. Currently, the thinking is, and I, I'm hoping that eventually they'll get over this, at the state level, that we are not 5 and 6. We are Region 5. We have very different needs in Region 5 for different industries than Region 6. However, they did make a good point that overall in the state with their data, the same jobs that are currently here in healthcare and other areas would be complementary. And so I'm here to bring you the message that after much discussion and much of me sort of really sticking up for Region 5, we do believe that any of their facilitators will be impartial to just looking at us as being Region 5 and 6 together with two facilitators. They're willing really just to put those facilitators around the state wherever they're located. And then they will basically work as one group. And they have planned to do an education project. I reminded them that leadership is about education. And I do believe educating everyone so it does not appear that they are biased towards Region 6 is super important. And we did come to an agreement to have that done. So I'm feeling really positive about that. The work that they're doing is incredible. And honestly, workforce is one of our strategic focuses because we cannot get businesses without the promise of being able to fulfill those roles in, as employees. So that's really exciting because I think a lot of people think of economic development in the past as just looking at jobs and business. But the workforce and the ongoing issues is something that we're really focused on as a team. And we're spending a lot of time doing that. So that's new. We're working on place branding with the county. The place branding is really important in the marketing. We will obviously take that message with us to any recruiters. We've had so many different marketing ideas and different ideas. We're trying to pull that together as, you know, visit, as the county, as any other organizations, the chamber. So we are working collaboratively and with other citizens and areas within the county to make that happen. Normally, you might think that's not an important thing, but what we say about our area and what we say as a group about it is super important for our development. And I'm really excited that we're all working together to do that. If you are interested in anybody, and we've opened this up and sort of made this known, we are inviting people to join a group that Commissioner Huff had. That wasn't just countywide, it was wide, open to everyone, to have their input on what that branding and what our message and what that looks like, and also working along with the cities individually. So I'm hoping that we can continue that because now I know, I, I told Sean Menchaca, I'm feeling a little pressured now because I need to keep up with the healthy city. So we're all gonna be on diets for that. But, but we are working on it and, and we're, we're trying to get that image down. And I think it's going well, but I think all the involvement that we can have is super helpful. So for us, I'm really excited that we have this as a focus. Some of the other things that we have are the airport and we have Main Street. And that rounds out our top areas of actual strategic plan focus. We do have about 25 other initiatives we're working on. And those initiatives are all smaller categories within most of these main categories. Daily, on a daily basis, we cover currently 12 new projects. This year, we, I decided that we would hit 100 projects. So rather than saying, how many businesses did you bring? I kind of explained this to Chris. We now consider them projects. And those projects are coordinated by if we're working on them daily, if we think that they're gonna happen in two months, or if they're kind of out in the distance, it's a business that's potentially wanting to come, but it's not on our radar every single day. The top touch, touchpoints of 11 might not seem like very many. We touch those projects every single day and they are big projects. Currently, two of them are over $200 million in investment. So just that alone, we facilitate the meetings for these businesses along with the investors. We also are working with the city and the county. And so Bannock Development will hold all the Zooms. We keep all the minutes, all the agendas, all the files. We're a neutral party, so they do feel like they can come to us to get all of this arranged. But I can tell you that that workload is pretty intense. And we probably will need an additional employee after we get these two projects. One is under LOI now, but another will be done shortly. And then we will need more people to work on that because it is a daily touchpoint. Super exciting, great thing. There's a lot of intensity to working on these with all the special parties, but we've managed to create a really good system with our project coordination. And we do keep all those notes in our file. The note, most of them are under security, where myself and only one other person has access, and then of course, my board. But we're able, if you want to come in and visit or you want to talk about any of them, we're able, we're all under a specific confidentiality agreement that Holly Troxel has newly prepared for us. And we found that that has helped us quite a bit to keep things a little bit more sealed up while we're trying to keep property costs down. And, you know, the details of projects a little bit more secure. I can tell you that I worked for five and a half months on a project that I was out of town for over three weeks working on. And I came back and within five minutes, that project was unraveled by a confidentiality problem and then also someone who just wanted to unravel the project. I did that more than three times on this specific project. And I have to tell you that after the, on the fourth time, I think I called the mayor for some encouragement because it's very hard to build it, build it, build it, and then get that to happen. So we're working on ways that we can educate more so that people understand the really importance of working together on that. Because it is very hard to get it right even in LOI or even at the time where they're gonna sign to come here. And then one tiny thing makes it all fall apart. I'm used to that in economic development, but it is harder. So those are some of the things that we are working on. I, again, I know Chris has visited me, the mayor comes over. I do invite all of you to, I know I meet with Rick as well. Linda and I have been trying. But to everyone else, Josh and Roger and Claudia and all of you, please come over and spend some time with me. You can kind of see how the process works now. It's very organized. We know what we're doing every day, but it changes from minute to minute. There could be anything. So it's kind of exciting. Some of the projects that we currently have, I wanted to let you know that we can tell you about. And obviously, they're not top secret, but who they are and what they are, are. We are working on a current county, public-private, big project. A residential strategic project, which would be housing near Northgate. That project is under LOI and it is a very, very big project. If you have questions about that, I can engage you on that project under NDA, my office. That project is moving along very swiftly. We currently have invited Steve Van Beek, our consultant from Steer, who is also working with Jared Wingo, who is doing the comprehensive plan with the airport. He will be in town on June 16th. We will send out an invitation today for the community to ask him questions about what that Phase 0 and Phase Going Forward projects look like. I've spent several meetings in DC working with him. And bless his heart, he really has given us a good deal on using his time. And so I've had many lessons from him. I've also been working with Larry Crowder at Spokane Airport where we continue to have courses on what to say to the airlines, how to direct our economic development data for them, and our commitments to using the airport. I personally do not use any other airport but the Pocatello Airport. I know it's inconvenient, but now after COVID, my, my, not excuse, but I guess I could say the positives are, we can almost all work remote if we have to stay somewhere. And I'm on my computer and I can work remote there. I don't have to exactly be where I'm at by using it. I am going to be engaging the businesses to discuss this plan on a high level with them. But we are working with the city as well to make sure that our airport is going to be able to become an economy of scale as far as economic development. We have a South Side, a South Side project going on. May include Cell Tower. Currently, it's something that we're just looking at. That is a project. It's not some, it's one of our non-touches every day, but it is something that we keep, continue to go back to. We have a project for an outdoor recreation company that we also have under our list, Coffee Roaster Innovation Egg Center. I reached out to one of the top innovators that works in AI for farming. They've been able to create software that actually tells the farmer exactly what they need to do to help out on making their farm sustainable and what's working and what isn't, and also in what relation to water and our future. They would like to possibly work with the college now, the college has an interest in this, to create an innovation hub. One of the things that Bannock Development has discovered in all of our talks is that we do not have enough incubators and innovation. So that is a high priority, working with the university to create these and possibly individually. This particular innovation in egg has several people in town that want to already work with him and some entrepreneurial businesses. And it may even include the tribe. So we, we're working hard on doing that. That would not be the only. That would not be the only innovation or incubator. We'd like to do technology. And there are several other, um, hubs that we think would be good for workforce, aeronautics and possibly in logistics. So it's super exciting to know that we're going to get those. Those always help economic development. Small to medium sized businesses love to attach themselves. And because we have an amazing city and an amazing county and the recreation and our lifestyle and wellbeing, it's attractive for them to come here. We just have not put in the effort to set those up. So, and I'm not, I don't want to say that disparagingly. We all have busy jobs in all of our organizations. And those are big things to take on. I worked on an innovation hub in Seattle and that was a 24/7 up at dawn job. So it does take a lot of time. And the money usually comes from the entrepreneurs. So it's a good way because they have grants and funding. Good way for us to grow that area. Um, moving on, we have, um, an industrial development that I am working on in Spokane. Spokane, um, this particular, um, business is huge. They're all over. They want to come here. They were ready to come here and then we had some other issues. And I think we will be on their docket for next year. Obviously we are, I can't believe it, already in May. And so I will keep visiting with them. I've made several visits and we'll continue to visit with them via Zoom. Um, about once a month until we can get them back engaged in coming, but I see it as happening down the line. We do have them as a A project, which means we're constantly focused. And that's because we do touch them upon them at least once a month and they will come here eventually. Um, we have a developer organization that is working on a project that's a high level as well. It's, um, a big two, uh, close to 200 million possible retail, commercial and other job industry, um, development, which will also be working with the public, private. So met with those investors over the weekend. I want to give, I don't like to, things to seem like they're so far off in the future. I am so excited because over the weekend we had five investors from the East Coast that are currently involved in one of these projects. We have four from another project and they're from the East Coast. And the excitement that they have for our area is, it's truly critical. Like we're on the map and people are looking and they're excited to come out here. They've visited and they find a lot of good here. So it's super exciting to have them on there. Um, and these are investors that want to pull the trigger sooner than later. There's some things we're working on. We're also working with the city. I'm grateful to the help I get from the city, um, to work on these projects. So that's exciting. And lastly, we have, um, a small urban renewal, renewal entrepreneurial, um, company that I met with, um, we are calling it, um, a retention expansion, but that he actually wants to, um, possibly buy up two or three existing businesses that he feels he can make, um, really successful again. And then also do some urban renewal and housing for, um, our downtown, which would be terrific because we need that. Um, and so those are some of the things that we are working on. If you have looked at North Gate, it is growing. The hospital is doing very well. Porton Health Trust, um, has continued to help us, um, be successful and I'm really grateful to them. So that's the wrap up of what we've been up to. It's been a lot. It may not seem like a lot from this conversation, but it definitely has taken this long. Um, so are there any questions or anything that you want to ask me?
Roger?
Um, when you were talking about, um, the difficulty you had in helping them to understand the separation between District Five and District Six.
Uh huh.
It seems to me that part of our leveraging ought to be I-15 and looking south. Because, um, the Salt Lake area and its expansion and the costs that are becoming prohibitive. We, we ought to be a good relocation or extension of a lot of businesses down there. We have the advantage of it's a hour less getting here and an hour less going back than some of our other competitors. So I would really think, I think people move along transportation corridors. And where our state's not very, um, sensitive to the east-west corridor, I think maybe the north-south corridor might, might be a better, um, way of leveraging.
Yeah, well, we, you know, that's a great point and you, you know, you're, you're spot on. I think, I think for this particular workforce initiative, I think, um, you know, they're looking at keeping people, attracting people that are already in college to stay here, you know? And, and even if we don't have that, I think this TPM initiative, it, I was pretty heated about it. That's why I went. Because I feel like there are a lot of differences that we should be proud of. We shouldn't have to compare ourselves to Idaho Falls, you know, our airport, any of that. Um, but that being said, I think working as a region, we do have a lot of strength too. And they made some good points in workforce. There's some other issues in economic development that I think we do need to separate ourselves from, but we do also, you're correct. We need to use, we're in a perfect location. When I actually spilled out to our new investors, what our airport has, just for example, what it is compared to other airports, they're like, we had no idea. We just thought you were a tiny little airport. We didn't realize the logistics part. And that's another thing that we are adding to our list this morning. We are going to revisit with Savage to work on, and I've spoke with Brent about this, for the, uh, economic development plan, we are going to work with them to, on the rail and doing much more in the logistics because we have it here. And those companies, once they, you know, that message just isn't getting out to them fast enough. And that's where we do really need to market that. And it's just so helpful. It is because they're like, oh, we didn't know that. They think of Utah and Utah's growing leaps and bounds. And I'm like, you would not believe the access here. I mean, it's incredible. And as an economic developer, I see it having come from huge areas and also having been in smaller ones. And I'm just excited about it because we're so lucky to have it. Uh, there's so many things that we really are lucky for in an economic developed standpoint. And it is just getting that message out there. And again, our SPA teams, our strategic, um, partner advisors, I encourage everyone to try and become on one of those to really help out with us in spreading those messages on those areas because it sure helps. I mean, just having been on the East Coast and done a lot of this, you know, Pocatello is like, people know where PIH is. You know, they're like, is that in, you know, now they know. And it's really exciting and they know where Pocatello and Chubak and the county, they know Bannock County. Um, I'm not usually, I mean, you know, I'm dressing pretty bright. I'm pretty much out there all the time, but I'll be anywhere. And one of our investors said, I don't see how any, everybody doesn't know about Pocatello with you because it's so positive. I'm so encouraged, um, with our area. I mean, it's just unbelievable.
Linda?
And I just want to thank you for, uh, not just all the work you're doing, but this energy and this positive outlook and everything. I, it just, it's exciting to see because there is a lot going on and I appreciate all the work that you're doing. But, but bringing this new energy and excitement to it, I think goes a long way. Um, and I did want to make one other comment. I am more than willing to be part of the Healthy City USA initiative with Porton Health Trust, but I'm not willing to diet.
I said, well, it was funny because my colleague reached out to me and he said, is this why you're on a diet? I heard you're Healthy City USA. I said, I'm not even on.
I'm participating in like the gratitude part and all that, but I'm, no, no, no.
Me and Kate, we know the old adage, it takes money to make money is true. How's your funding doing?
So that's a great question. We are having a, um, event for the first time in all this time. Um, we are re-engaging with our, um, our investors and VIPs. It's just going to be very laid back, but we'll have, um, a great dinner and we will, you guys are all invited and we will have, um, convert, just conversations on how do we keep it going? I'm, I'm really conscientious about funding, but obviously this stuff costs a lot of money. Um, you know, just, just our consultants and just keeping up the investors. And they expect very high caliber, even though we're small. These are big, big investors who are investing, you know, they're choosing over many big cities to come here. And it's really exciting, but we do have to keep that caliber high and it does cost money. Um, and also our dedication to traveling and using the airport is more. Um, so we hope that once we visit with the investors and we re-engage them that they'll realize, you know, these are some of the things we're doing and it does cost money. But right now we are currently on a over budget for this year. Our, um, our treasurer, Brian Barrett, did authorize us to be in a working year to actually be spending on some of these projects that we are as a neutral party to help out the airport and these other investment projects. We literally facilitate everything for them, like we did for Morton Buildings. And the companies love it because they can go to one place. We get the city involved, we get the county and we can go back and forth. And they know they can just call us and say, hey, I need this or that. So it's been really an amazing thing. Um, also we're working on one of our, well, not just one of our investors, but several investors who have currently worked with me are like, we would like to, we're coming there, we're developers, but we also need to have them involved in supporting us because we don't just bring a business here. We're staying with them forever in retention expansion. And so once we get them here, like Morton, I reached out to them. We're currently working with them. How's the workforce? What do you need? What's happening? They know they can just pick up the phone anytime and call us and we will help them on any issues they have. So it's a forever thing. They're our babies. Um, and, and so they know that. And then we give them the organizations that work, they can work with. And then that's the other thing. We're very engaged in working with all of the other wonderful organizations and the hardworking people, especially like Stephanie Pelagi, Main Street. Um, I'm currently working on getting some investments for them. As Bannock Development, we would not keep any money that was given for that. We would give that to them to spend. We don't, that's not what we do, um, as far as that. But if we had our Series A and we could accept those bigger, um, investments, that would be good for them. So I think we're doing well. I mean, we always could use more money, but we don't, it's not like I'm, you know, going to be homeless or anything. And, and you know, but I mean, without houses, um, it, it was very difficult to get a house. And then that being said, um, you know, I, I appreciate all the people that are working really hard and it is difficult. Especially being single and I know how a lot of people are operating. I'm very encouraged by the senior housing that is going in. I'm super excited by that. And the, um, neighbor works and all that they're doing. So, and United Way, of course. All, all of the organizations that we, um, are involved with, the Chamber and all the great work that they're doing, we're just, we have a lot of support. So.
Thank you. Roger?
Um, you've talked about a lot of organizations, but one I haven't heard you mention. If you're working in our airport, don't you have to coordinate with the Power County?
Yes.
Development group?
Yeah, yeah.
Because they're the ones that can really do some stuff out there. I don't know that you have.
Yeah, well, I don't sit on that board, first of all, um, but I am in touch with them and it's a, it's, it's the situation where Brent and I have actually worked on the economic development and they're working on a more high level, but we'll actually be bringing the businesses into that comprehensive plan. And so we would like, I would like to have, um, more, um, collaboration with them, but I do work with the individuals individually, um, but I do not sit on that board. That, I think that's an appointed board and, um, I, I also think that one of the ways that we're able to get, um, say, for example, to pay, uh, Steve Van Beek and to create these consulting reports and help is for us to be a neutral party, not to be, um, have a conflict of interest. And that's one thing that we've been able to do. We spent our own money to do, um, planning for one of our current projects. We will seek reimbursement. Um, but with the airport, we were able to use our own money to do these, um, consultations. And it would have taken a bid process over a, um, certain amount with the city. So in working with them, we can give them what we have and we're not trying to work against them by any means. And we are always in contact with Power County, um, every day, almost.
So you might just mentioned the meetings that you have with Power, with, um, Kristin
Kristin, yes.
With the South County Economic Development people. It's not like you're just siloed into your area here. You're
Correct, yeah.
You're kind of the hub and have been the hub for those other economic development agencies.
Yes, we, when we're working on anything with the airport, we work FAA, the airport. We work with Power County, the tribe and, um, you know, us and any economic development that's city. So there's, you know, five entities that we're in continual contact with, including, um, Alan and, um, Christie and then all, all of Palard County, however they want to be. They don't have a lot of funds and so they could not facilitate these consultations that actually give us plans and goals to build the economy there. Um, and so they're grateful that we're spending that money doing that.
Well, they're going to be a beneficiary. They ought to be a player.
And, and I, we're having those talks. We're having those talks, definitely. Um, I think there's a lot of ways as it grows that I'll be presenting to you over when I come back that you'll see, hey, maybe some things do need to change in the way we're doing things. And it's definitely in the talks. So, and, and again, that's something where I think if you follow me for a day and you go to those meetings or whatever, you'll see that a lot of that is taking place at a top, on a top level. Um, the state of Idaho, according to the workforce, has placed economic development at the top of the pyramid, which it always has kind of been a cloud, I've always said. Um, without workforce and some of these other collaborations, we wouldn't be able to even stay up there. I mean, we can't do economic development. And if you know how Utah works, economic development is a huge, huge thing and it trickles down. And they're not having as much of a struggle. So this is what the state, um, is telling us they've adopted, but we're fighting. I mean, you know, we're trying to keep it top of mind. So.
How, how is the situation with Sky West affecting what you're doing?
So, you know, I have had, um, hours and hours and hours of training from our, um, experts. And I already knew airports really well. And one of the really things that we need to focus on is how we've been going to Sky West. And, um, most of the airport, I've worked at Payne, I've worked at Sea-Tac, I've worked in Spokane. All of them have the same thing. They've given me a list of exactly what those people are looking for. And the airport has a consultant, Meaden Hunt, that tells them that, but I think they've never contacted me. And they're like, Christie and Alan and I have discussed, maybe it is important that we're all on the same page because our consultants are saying they want to hear economic development. They want to know what these projects are. They don't, it's great to say, we need you and this is ridership, but they want to know what our future looks like and that there's people committed to doing that. And we haven't, in everyone's defense, we haven't really had that before. We haven't had. Bannock Development, um, has been a little bit all over the board on different projects and now we have a focus. And so going to the airlines and saying specific things and also meeting with us and looking at what those projects are under confidentiality, they believe is super important. So working with them, I think has been, we need to educate more to be better for them. We can't look at them as the enemy, right? Because they're capitalists. They're airlines. There's no other better way to explain that. And all experts will tell you, they are capitalists. So how do we work with the big capitalist airlines? What do we do? I mean, it's difficult. It is. But I think it's, I think we're going to be way better off and very soon.
Okay. Cause I, I mean, I'd be interested to hear if you have conversations with them because we gave them what they wanted and they still haven't signed the contract and it's been two months.
Yeah, well, I mean, I asked.
What the, what the holdup is, they either want it or they don't want it, kind of thing.
Yeah, I asked Steve about that as well. I said, you know, why, why are they, you know, and he's like, they're not, they're, they're really tiptoeing around quite a few things. I know Mayor Blad was working on some things with the airport. They're really tiptoeing around, not just with us, but with many other airports and, uh, many other cities um, around some lawsuits that are floating around out there. And they're also just capitalists. So they're just, you know, they're putting the screws to a lot of, um, cities and I, I feel more positive than negative about it. I don't like the treatment, but I also see every day with big business, how this happens with vendors, contractors, a lot of, you know, other groups we're dealing with. And I don't think they're any different. Banking, I mean.
Cause in your, cause you've mentioned, uh, you mentioned earlier. Because in your, because you've mentioned, you mentioned earlier about how, you know, how we portray ourselves, right? Our city, our area, our region, you know, and I'm just wondering, does us letting them make all our decisions, all the decisions in this situation, with no pushback, does that make us look like we don't value our region?
Well, I can tell you that I had this conversation recently with the airport. And it, my conversations don't always make me popular, I'm going to say that. But I do feel like it's an everyday in their face, we have to continue to tell them that this is what we're doing. So if our consultants aren't asking this, we need to be in our consultant's face all the time, saying, well, we need this. We're top of mind when we push them, and we maybe have not pushed them as much. And maybe we need another message as well. So I think working together with all the entities that I mentioned, I think we do need to be, make that message clearer. And we are, I mean, I appreciate all the work everybody does at the airport. It's not easy. And, but we, I don't want to lose it, and I don't want to lose that huge economy of scale either. They're in a, you know, the airport will be an economy all its own. And that will keep us growing forever. I mean, it's just, that's just how it is. It seems tiny and minute right now, but it isn't. And we have a huge pie to work with. And we're lucky because we're youthful. And even though it's not booming like a mature, we have the ability to build it from here forward. And so working with them every day on a basis, I'm working with the airport. Like I said, I work on this initiative and touch it every day. It's a focus, at least for an hour.
Chris?
Yeah, a couple of things. So, in terms of working with our airport, with other organizations, with city staff, et cetera, in a consolidated, focused way, rather than, you know, you coming in from the outside and, you know, having to be the one knocking on the door. Even though I know Ellen and Christie are very open to conversations, you know, they're, they're part of the city, which is a much larger organization. So if you could have, from the city, what you believe you need in order to be as effective as possible, since you're the person with the education contacts, et cetera, et cetera, the consultants, what would you be getting from the city if you could wave a magic wand and get it?
That's a great question. So I can tell you what the setup looks like for the planning and goals that would be for economic development. So there's comprehensive, airport, runway, that, and then development. And working with Brent and myself and several others, Bannock Development has, so we're paying Steve Van Beek $10,000, my board approved that. It is a probably five-phase, and Phase Five would be out about two years. But he would continue like he does in every airport that he's in, because he's national and he's very popular. He's probably the most person they seek out to develop. It's a 10,000 increment, so to be at the end is probably 50,000. So I, that, if I had to wave my magic wand, I would have that money in just a fund for the airport to do this particular Stage Five development. It helps me because it gives us a goal plan for every year on, are we doing this with the airlines? Are we doing this? Are we doing this? And not even necessarily overlapping the wonderful job everybody else is doing, but really focusing on, if we're going to bring in logistics and distribution, what do we do this year to recruit them? What do we do with that? What's the goal for us to have that? And the other thing is, is using this, these consultants, they know everyone. And they've taken us under their wing because we are an underdog. And they're really willing to give us a lot more than they, you know, than we're paying them. So to me, that's what it would be. Bannock Development is footing that bill, and we're doing it as a neutral party to help the city and the development at our airport. Because I find it to be, in economic development, so huge.
So it seems to me as that one of the things that you might need is the consultant develops the plan. And then at the end of the day, however, perhaps, the city says, fine and dandy, we don't like the plan, take a hike.
Yeah.
Now, I don't foresee that exactly happening, but I can foresee that happening to some degree or in some manifestation. So is there anything in the arena of, you know, formalizing a collaborative process so that at the end of this $50,000 and a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, there's, because that would be a huge blow to not, not just, you know, the process and all your work. But if we demonstrated that we can't work collaboratively, I mean, it appears to me on the flip side, if we can, say, as a city government, we are more than capable of working collaboratively with neutral entities. That's a huge plus for anybody coming in because they don't want to come into a siloed arena, as you've already demonstrated.
Right, and it actually is happening, we're just at the beginning point. Steve's coming on the 16th, we've had several meetings with him as different groups of people. This is an opportunity for everyone to see him in person and ask him questions. And then he plans on that happening. He wants to show us how we can work collaboratively. He wants to show us, these are some plans and some goals. You guys tweak them to how you want, but follow them so you get somewhere. He, you know, he doesn't want to waste time, and we don't want to waste time or money. And so, but you also have to look at, from him and Jared Wingo, who does the comprehensive plan, they work with tons of cities. So they, of course, see that the city will come in, or the county and say, or whoever owns it. Some airports are now privately owned. And so they'll say to them, you know, oh, this isn't working, we don't want to do this. And he's, he's been hit by this a million times, so he knows then, okay, this is what we can do next. You know, he's, he's not going to drop us and say, give me $10,000 a phase. And then, you know, he's really in it for the long haul. He really wants, especially Steve, wants to see this. And Jared, he, he'll always be, you know, a part of that comprehensive plan person. And they're actually working together too. So it'll be very important after he visits for us to put together people that want to do this and the airport board. I know Rick sits on that as well. And that's where I think they, you know, that input is super important. That's where the plan of, okay, this is going to go here, this is going to go here, this is going to go there, how can we bring those in together, working with that same message? So he's not trying to take over any main plan. He's just showing us, this is how other places do it, and this is where my expertise lies. We don't have that expertise, we just don't. I mean, I've worked on airports 10 years, and I've been taking these intensive classes now for over three months and part of last year. And every time, I'm like, wow, I just did not know. But my passion is high for it, and we do, as an organization, have the time because it is so important to our main goal. And we can't drop it, you know, we would be really without that. But all, it takes all of us. It does not just take, it cannot just take the person that facilitates doing, here's a goal and plan, and now we have to actually do it and be accountable to it. And my board expects me to show progress in that, and I think we'll see that. And he'll address that when he's here as well. He wants the community to work together because that is how it really works. And he'll dispel some of the myths about the airlines and about them that will, I think, will be helpful. Because again, leadership is education. And if you're just guessing, because you don't know, like, I mean, there's lots of times they tell me things, I'm like, what's that? You know, their leadership is in educating me and me educating when people ask. Because it's a big, huge piece of a puzzle. I mean, it's complex in so many ways. It's not an easy target, and it's not an easy project, so.
Another question, non-airport related, and that is, so obviously retaining building locally available workforce is dovetails right into housing. Because you can't keep people if you've got no affordable place for them to live.
Right.
So do, and I know, I'm sure you can't talk about specifics, but can you speak for a moment to any affordable housing prospects that may be out there? Because the retaining college kid, they're not going to buy a $650,000, $4,000 square foot house.
Right, right. Well, and I wouldn't, I'm an urban professional, and it's me, right? I, it's me, I don't have a dog, and I don't have my child's in school. And, and, you know, so it's like, I am not going to live in a 4,000 square foot home either. I mentioned dog because, you know, I have this thing about housing, because I just have to get this out there. We have very few places that people, young people have dogs. My daughter and her boyfriend have a German Shorthair, they're outdoors, recreational. They can't rent a place because no one will let them have a dog. And, and so when we worked with HUD, they actually mentioned that one of the stipulations for seniors was they could not have their pets. And, you know, I'm an animal lover. I mean, I'm not a vegetarian because I'm an animal lover, but I love animals. And so to me, I think it's very important to have a pet. Now, my landlord, rest in peace, he just recently passed away. He was fine with me having a pet, but I don't have time. But I, I do think that young kids are looking for something different in housing. And we cannot tell them, you must live in, first of all, they've lived in apartments. So if they're 24 and 25, they're done with that. They're ready to move into their first home or have a place where they can park their boat or their camper or wherever. And, and so I'm not, I don't think that we need big, huge plots. I do think we need some high density, medium density, good density. But I also think that we need affordability, and they need options in what type of housing they do want. If there was a condo that I really liked, I would move to that. I think anybody's like that, or if there's an apartment or whatever. But I took a look around and I interviewed 25 developers from all over. And the consensus of them was, we're going to build, you know, like you said, really nice, big, beautiful homes. But can our workers that are coming really buy those? So what do we need to do? So I'm currently working with a developer, we're under LOI. They are committed to building affordable housing on a wide scale. And that will include some multi-use, Brent is aware. I do think that it's something that we are really supporting. And they're, they know the area and they love it. And it's really a legacy project for this developer to build this. And we will make an announcement probably in the next, you know, month or two, maybe the next time I come to visit you, I don't know when that is exactly. Maybe it depends when the mayor wants to see me again. But I, I will have an update on that. And I think you'll be very pleased that we did look at property and we did look at, we do need affordability. But that's not to say that we don't also need other housing, which is going up. And also, we have Chubbick that's building a lot of multi-tenant housing. And so I spoke with them as well, and, you know, they're like, maybe, you know, we've, we've got enough going up right now. But I'm very encouraged about houses that are going to be affordable. And affordable isn't, it's not really affordable right now, right? Like gas was like $4.99 in Boise. You know, we're in an inflationary period, so affordable is a very moving target right now. But it's the best I could do on a huge scale. And I think, I'm hoping that you'll be proud that this is something that we really needed here. And I think they're dedicated to being part of this area, not just building and leaving. It'll be a forever thing.
Thank you.
So, so on that topic that was just being discussed, you know, it's, to me, it's not just, there's a need for affordable housing, there's also a need for, like, way back in the day, way back, when I was young and single, I wanted to own something, but I didn't want to mow a lawn, and I didn't want to, so, you know, a nice townhouse, a nice condominium complex, you know, with green areas, and just something like, things like that. I, I find that is a lot of what we're missing here.
Yes.
Because young, single people aren't interested in owning a five-bedroom house, or even a three-bedroom house. You know, you want a two-bedroom condo, so you have a guest room or an office. And, and then you can just take your mountain bike and leave for the weekend, and you don't have to worry about all the other stuff that, you know, house owners have to worry about.
Right, ownership was a big topic of conversation with the developers. Many of them are currently in the landlord-tenant sort of carpetbagger era, that's what I call it. I go back to looking, I, I wasn't there, but I studied the 70s, did a thesis on it. And I feel like a lot of what we're going through in everything, in our, in our communities, in our finances, in our housing, you look back at those economies and it's like, the pop culture is a little different, but everything else is falling in line. And, and so ownership is huge on the minds, ownership. But you're exactly right, I would love that. I would love it, because I don't mow, I don't have time to even eat dinner. I mean, and they're like that too, and they want to be outside at 6:30. They want to take their dogs for a run, they're going to use our amazing trail system. And so, you know, Brent and I have talked about this, and even this developer is like, there is a need for this, that type of housing, and they have that mind as well. There's a lot of property, and there's a lot of room for, for this. And so not only would it be ownership, but it would be affordable and also be multi-use.
And freeing, you know?
Yes.
If you can own something, but not be a slave to it.
Right.
So that's great to hear.
Yeah, yeah, I, I appreciate your comment on that because it is, it's something that has come up. And especially, you know, in our world of landlord-tenant and renting, ownership has come up time and time again. There's a place for that, we need to put some in here. And so it's huge, and I think you'll be pleased, I do.
Okay, looks like Chris has another question.
Yep, last question for me is, you talked, I think, about kind of 11 focus projects. And again, I understand you can't be specific, but, and I understand that something can unravel in 10 minutes.
And probably already has this morning, but.
But, but, you know, best educated guess regarding potential realization timeline based on those 11 high-touch projects?
So anything that is an A high-touch project, we anticipate to happen within two years. We anticipate a build or a start to happen anytime. I, I mean, I literally could get one of these projects off the ground if we could just move, you know, one particular problem. And that's what we're focused on for today. You know, that's why I was in Boise, that's why I do go to meet them in person, and we hammer it out. And I can tell you that if, if and when you meet them, and we have invited some of them to our VIP dinner, they will tell you that I literally am on them every day about something so that we can make this happen. So those projects happen fast. I, you probably know me by now, I like to move the needle. And if it's a project that isn't going and I can't get it, I just move on to the next. The reason why our projects are numbered 22-100, I anticipate touching 100 projects this year. So we're, we're well past 11, those are the ones that were high-touch. But we've already probably done 27, 28.
Right.
And those ones, we've tabled some of those because it's like, like maybe the Spokane one, we're still working with them, but we have another one. I have investors in Seattle that want to come here that I just haven't had a chance to go visit yet. And I'm going next week. So they have a business they want to bring. I've got another investor out of Boise that wants to bring four businesses here. How can we make that happen and what that, does that timeline look like? And so I, by the, that's what my marking will be. I guessed at the beginning of the year, we would touch 100 projects.
Right, so, so within two years, max, you would envision at least one of these high-touch projects being actually here?
Yes. I can tell you that one of our high-touch projects, they want to begin actual business in 2024. So we're on a huge timeline for build because we can't get supplies, we can't get, you know, and they know this. So that's why so many investors are coming together. So that's why so many investors are coming together. Some of the bigger people can bring in the supplies and that and help them. There's a huge collaboration. The other, we already have under LOI and they so much want to do that property that they're like, find me some other properties so we can get started right now. And so it, it's just, that's what's happening. It's very volatile as far as it could, today they could be like, okay, we're on board, but then getting supplies and that and workforce is going to be, we're already jumping there. How do we help them have this? And so, yeah, we will. We will have a big difference within two years.
Looks like Claudia and then Roger.
I don't have any more questions, but I just want to tell you, me personally, with you at the helm of Fannick Development, I am so encouraged.
Thank you.
I am so encouraged because you're actually a doer. You're a doer. And, and it's very encouraging. So I really want to.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I couldn't do it without all of the help I get from employees of the cities and the mayors and my board. But I, I love it and I, I think we underestimate what we truly have here. And it's gonna, it's just remarkable and I'm so glad. But thank you.
Just as a, a way of pushing the future a little bit, we own a lot of land as a city at the airport. Are some of these projects where it would be that they would relocate outside of our airport and we would perhaps expand the city limits out there?
That's a great question.
Because I could see them buying a private parcel out there because they want to own.
Right.
And we have to go through a bunch of hoops to, with our land. So would, would somebody look at buying land adjacent to the airport so we could annex it so they could be in the city limit?
I, I definitely, I, I think I kind of alluded to, without saying too much, that there's a lot of opportunity and things as it grows out there for things to happen. And some of the clients I've talked to have in fact said, oh, we can't buy, we have to lease. But Morton Building wanted to buy and they looked at five different properties. And we sat down and I said, look, these are the advantages of leasing and they're so happy. I check in with them all the time. As far as expansion, I definitely think there's some things that could happen in that whole entire area that can make some big differences in the future. And as we grow, I think those are going to have to be looked at and addressed and maybe become an option. So it's, nothing's off the table. You know, if you look at Walla Walla's airport, I believe they became private. So, you know, someone came in and just bought up and they're redoing things. And, and sometimes, you know, parts of the airport that can happen. And that is something that's happening because airports are like, we want to take control of what's happening with our, you know, the airlines and then this. We want to fight a little bit back against the capitalism. And so there's a lot of opportunities for things to change and it's new. A lot of it's new. We've, we've sat on airports for years and years and years, how we used them and operated them. And also with logistics and the way drones and all of that are coming in, airports have become a real economy of scale. And anybody who's been to Singapore, if you've been through that airport, you could literally live there. And, you know, they've got whole open spaces and, I mean, it's, it's just incredible. But that feeds an entire economy built into their culture. And so they are important. Spokane will tell you too, that it changed their landscape. It really did. I was there when they were tiny. We had one flight, Alaska flight, that took us to Seattle to get anywhere. So we were no different than having to go to, you know, Salt Lake City. And we just need to look at that. We need to open ourselves up and we are. And I appreciate all of the help that I get on that. But I think it could be an option. Yeah.
Super. Thank you, Mia Kate.
Thank you.
With that, we are going to go ahead and take a break really quick and then we'll give Public Works an opportunity to get set up and stuff. So with that, we'll, we'll take a break for a few minutes. And that is, uh, quick for us. So as soon as I get the thumbs up, I got the thumbs up. Thank you very much for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and continue with our study session. Agenda item number four, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA projects discussion. Public Works staff will be present to discuss ARPA projects and receive feedback and guidance from the city council members. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director and City Engineer. My pleasure to come back to you today and, and talk a little bit more about the ARPA projects, the ARPA funding. If you recall, we met together back in March and, and I brought together a list at that time and, and then we had solicited some feedback from council members and just wanted to come back and meet with you and, and talk to about where, where we are with that. Just to give you a little refresher on where we're at historically. So we've been allocated $10.7 million. We received our first allotment of $5.35 million in September of '21. The final, excuse me, the ARPA was enacted in March 3rd of 1921, or 2021. And in December 31, 2024 is when we have to have our ARPA funds obligated. And December 31 of 2026 is when the ARPA funds must be spent. So just to give you a little refresher on the key objectives of this funding, it's primarily utilized, should be utilized to fight the pandemic and support families and businesses struggling with its public health and economic impacts, maintain vital public services even amid declines in revenue resulting from the crisis, build a strong, resilient and equitable recovery by making investments that support long-term growth and opportunity. So this is a modified list that we gave to you back in March, on March 10th of 2022. I say modified for a couple of reasons. One of the things that we, we didn't get on the list back in March were the, the two bottom-left projects for the zoo and the Ross Park drinking water improvements. Those are some, some projects that had been identified and they didn't make it on the list. So I apologize for that. Also, another modification that we've made to this list is that we have removed the Dole Stone project from this list and I'll talk a little bit more about that on a further slide. So some of the new ideas that, that came back from the council, from their solicitation for ideas was, were fire danger warning signs for wooi within the city limits, EV charging stations, the Riverside Golf Course clubhouse renovation and reuse of the WPC water discharge. Also worth noting, like I mentioned, we did remove Dole Stone from the list. We will, we will be using an alternative approach to stabilize that area. We'll be injecting some polymer injections into the road and try to identify where those voids are and inject those with polymer and, and try to re, rehabilitate that area. We found out about this technology at a recent conference that we went to and we feel like that we can really accomplish what we need to accomplish there for less than about $50,000.
I was going to ask about the money for it. When, where you would anticipate in getting that money from? If it's $50,000, you would have that in your budget or?
Yeah. So because it benefits streets, water and WPC, they will split that cost and they'll just pay for that out of their, out of their operating funds.
Okay. President Cheatham?
Is there any area in that Dole Stone area besides the streets that are endangered?
Not that I, not that I, I'm aware of. There is some settlement that's happened kind of on the fringes of that area where they've had to replace some sidewalks and driveways and different things like that. The area, the primary area where the landfill was at is, has been left as open space. And so the only other stuff that goes across there is the road and then our utilities. But, but there's a little bit of settlement going on, on the fringes. I have seen some work that some of the houses have had kind of go in and do some injection underneath their, their footings and stuff, but nothing, nothing real significant like we've seen in the middle. So.
Is this same kind of problem potentially, Jeff, could occur at the old Alameda landfill?
I, I don't believe so because they've put a cap over that one and, and sealed it pretty good. And, and so I don't think we'll have a lot of issues up there. Plus there's, there's no development or anything that's happened on top of that. So as long as, as long as that cap is maintained, I think we're, we're pretty secure up there. So. So the feedback on the following slides is, is based on the top priorities that we saw from the council members who did reply. This is kind of hard to see on the, on the spreadsheet, but I did provide you guys a hard copy of that. But basically we've got some feedback from Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Lyric and Councilmember Cheatham. We also did a word cloud based on the top choices from the council responses. It's, for what it's worth, I mean, when you've only got three people giving you ideas, a word cloud doesn't give you a lot of, a lot of.
I would interject that just because we didn't write them down. When we met that day, we were clear that there were certain, certain things that should be on the list. Just because we didn't write them down and turn them in doesn't mean we didn't participate in the meeting and clarify that these should be priorities in that meeting.
Okay. Yeah. And, and the great clarification, basically we were basing this on the feedback that we got from the mayor's office that had been received from the council members. So, yeah.
I, I, South Fifth is at the top of your cloud?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's significant, but I'm just wondering, how did sewer-ing South Fifth become the top priority?
I wouldn't say that it's the top priority. Two of the, the people that submitted, submitted information back to the mayor's office identified that as one of their top 10 priorities.
What, what, because we, there is a mainline sewer and water out to Century, correct? So when we talk about sewer on South Fifth, what are we actually talking about?
I've got a slide further on in, in the presentation. Well, actually I've got some clarifications about some of the different projects and so, yeah, we'll, we'll get to that.
Okay. Thanks.
You bet. So based on, like I say, based on the feedback that we got from the mayor's office with the spreadsheet, these were the list of projects that received two, at least two votes from council members. They were Johnny Creek Sewering, Brooklyn's Playground, City Fuel Site, Satterfield Waterline Sidewalks, South Fifth Sewer and the Well Number Two projects. Those together all accomplish about $7.9 million. Any questions on any of those projects?
Yeah. Just help me clarify for myself. So when Justin was here talking about drill, well two, I believe that what was approved was to drill the test well. And I believe it, whatever it was that was approved, I believe you said that that was already within the, in the rate study, you were just doing it sooner rather than later. Could you just clarify the whole, I know what, I know well two needs to be dealt with. I get that. But could you just clarify the particulars, please?
Yeah, thank you. Justin Armstrong, Water Superintendent. So well two, where we are right now and, and what we've discussed and approved is we've approved a contract for Keller Associates to begin the design process for well replacement. And as part of the phasing of that, that project, one of the first phases is to develop a test well, to design that accordingly and confirm the water quality and quantity and, and determine which water-bearing zones may have a contaminant threat or anything like that, as well as proper siting of that well. And so well two was never within the horizon of the current planning study of, was that up through 2024?
Yep.
The, the, the study that was, that was found within, you know, our evaluations with ISU and Hannah, we've determined that well two was on a, on a horizon that would need to be replaced within the next five years. And so we would anticipate that it would have been on the next rate study. But a couple of months later, we, we found that the conditions had accelerated and we had to take it offline. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's several, several parts to, to drilling a well or, you know, building a well. And then the first part of that is the design and then you do the test well and then you actually construct the well. And, and what we had presented to the council was that, that the cost, the total cost was going to be around $2 million. And we got approval to do the design and we'll be bringing approval. We, we just opened the bids for the test well and we'll be bringing that to a future council meeting as well. But the, the overall estimated cost of that project is $2 million.
Right. So, but, but I, I mean, we have, have we not contracted already for the design and test well? And so if the overall cost is $2 million, have we, that's not been paid? We've just contracted in anticipation that this $2 million would be approved?
The, the only portion that's been approved under a contract is the design and engineering services. The test well was just bid, bid out. The engineering group put forth a bid packet and we, we just had the bid opening this week. So that, that will be before the council in, is projected in the next council meeting.
So, um, the money then, I mean, is, so those, the test well and the design are not dependent on this ARPA money is, is what I think I'm hearing because we've already, apparently we've already bid it out, we're already, you know, they're already designing and therefore that suggests to me that there's, the money for, to pay for that is somewhere already.
They, they are dependent upon the ARPA money. When we brought the design contract to council, we, we made it very clear that that would be funded by the ARPA funding.
Okay. So what is the total cost that we're already obligated for, give or take? Because, because that's within the $2 million, not on, not $2 million on top of?
Yeah, I don't have the, the contract in front of me, but I believe it's somewhere close to about $200,000 for full design as well as construction services throughout the.
But not the test well?
The test well bid came in at about $59,000.
Okay. So we're roughly at, you know, $259,000, $260,000, somewhere in that general vicinity. Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
One of the things, I'm, I'm real okay with the idea of a well number two. I still need a lot of answers with regard to Fifth Street and where the nitrates are coming from. I think it's a somewhat of an indicator that the pond is not full up at the zoo when this is birding season. And I have to see that there's a correlation between that pond's drainage and the fact that the well real close to that showed a high increase in nitrates. When you release a lot of water over top of your aquifer, I, I think you flush it. And, and so I, I'm not sure that we are at a critical point on Fifth Street until we know and had, collect, collect the data. Because some of the stuff I look in the nitrate report is iffy in terms of, we think, we don't know. And so I'm a little, and I'll, I'll weigh in, but I wanted to say that I think we may have contributed a lot to the compromise of well number two.
The zoo is in the process of getting a seepage study put together for that, that wetland pond. I think they're scheduling that sometime in June, I think, I'm pretty. So that'll, that'll be coming up and that'll give us a better indicator. But if you go back to the study that was done by Hannah and Jenna last year and the work that was done by Sarah Godsey and stuff, that, that really gave pretty good indicators that, that there were, there was a lot of strong indicators that, that contaminants, not necessarily that particular spike, but a lot of the contaminants that are, that are coming into that, that area are, are coming from that South Cliff, South, South Cliff, Black Cliff area.
And I remember that presentation and, and that was, but my, my concern is that spike. My concern is we need to know and acknowledge what caused that spike. And I find it hard to believe in my uneducated brain when it comes to water issues that that spike suddenly came from those South Fifth. came from those South Fifth Septics. I, I'm going to bet that that came from that pond, because, because the only people who knew that that pond was built was the zoo. I mean, that, and that, and, and, and so I'm just very concerned about, about that. And I just want us to be honest about, I want us to figure out exactly what contaminated that, that well, that spiked it so, so drastically, and I want us to be honest about what that was, and then deal with that. Because if we don't deal with it, we can't just ignore it and hope that the new, the new well is going to be okay just because it's deeper. I'm concerned about that.
Sure, and we're working on that. I think the bigger issue, though, is the fact that those wells have been trending up for, for the past several years, and we anticipated, even well before that pond was ever constructed, we anticipated that this well would have to be replaced within the next five to 10 years.
And I understand what you're saying, but that spike was monstrous.
Right. And, and, and we're working on it, so. Okay?
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin. So then, these are the, these are the other projects here that were kind of on the list, but they only got the one vote, so they, they were, they were kind of bumped down in priority. So far as supplemental information, one of the, one of the things that was on the list was stormwater. So if that's, if that's something that council chooses to, to fund, we have a lot of stormwater needs within the city, and if that's something that council chooses to fund, there's a lot of projects out there, and we would take that money and, and figure out where we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck, and, and try to identify those projects.
Jeff, technical question, maybe, from my, from my uneducated perspective?
Sure.
So, how do or can, or could aquifer recharge and stormwater interrelate? Because we're capturing stormwater from where we don't want it, and we're therefore going to send it to somewhere, and so is there any kind of interrelationship and, where we could get bang for the buck?
Come, come on over, Hannah, you can help answer this question, too.
Hannah Sangar, Science and Environment Division Administrator. Yes, they, they can be related, so it's about locating it, your stormwater pond, in a place where it will recharge your aquifer. I think important to remember that our summer storm events are...
Intermittent.
Intermittent, and, yeah, so it's, you know, planning on that to recharge the aquifer is, you know, it's, it's not necessar, it's more going to be incidental recharge in, in most locations. In some locations, there might be substantial of a small area. Our wells are very deep generally, especially in the northern part of the aquifer, that's what protects them from groundwater contamination on the surface, so unlikely to see it, you know, directly impacting our, our deep wells. So, connected, but it's site-specific for, for benefits.
We'll take all the recharge we can get, but I mean, the amount of stormwater that actually is going to get recharged would be, would be minimal, so. Okay?
Even if it fills the underpass.
We've done that a time or two.
Okay. One of the other items that was on here was Brooklyn's Playground. We had, we had identified about $100,000 here to redo the surface, right, John? On the Brook, Brooklyn's Playground. But since that time, one thing that we've found out is that Brooklyn's Buddies has raised over $42,387 over the past 10 years. It's potential that this money could be used for a supplement or, or help, help to do this project as well. So it would, it would require approval from the Portland Valley Partners Board before those funds could be obligated.
Jeff, go ahead, go ahead.
Have you spoken with them about their intentions with that money?
I have not. Have you, John? Do you have any indicator? I, no.
Okay, so we know they have the money, we don't know if they had plans with it already or what, okay.
Yeah.
That money, I was president of the board, and that money was intended for this purpose when it was established. I don't think you'll have any problem getting that money from PVP. One of my concerns about that is the plan has changed. When Brooklyn's Playground was built, it had a very specific type of surface put in it to protect children who might be using that facility, who are not fully capable of getting around by themselves. And now there's a discussion of putting simply an artificial turf system in, which I'm not assured has the same kind of protection for those kids. And I think this $100,000 bid for this surface is based on turf, not on the original surface that was in place. And that concerns me.
Yeah, well, we probably need to find that out, because that was definitely a big selling point to the community, the, the surface and, and how it would protect the, the youth, and so.
Sorry, Rick, I should just let you go.
We probably need to find out what that really looks like, if that's what we're doing.
John, will you take care of that? One of the other items that was included on here was repaving city sites, repaving city parking lots. We haven't done a detailed analysis on all of our parking lots yet, but if this, if this money is allocated for this, then we would come to get together and come up with a paving plan in order, in order to do that. We've got some estimated costs there for, for different types of treatments, and then we've got some of the lots that we've identified that need some work, our city hall, NOP, the rec center, cemetery roads, greenway trails, some of those different amenities, so. Another idea that came up was electric vehicle charging stations and city fleet, electric vehicles. If, if the council chose to put some money towards electric vehicles, we anticipate that these would be purchased for city hall departments to create a motor pool, and then if charging stations were identified, we, we estimate that the, the slow charging stations are about $3,000 to $5,000 each, and the fast charging stations are $100,000 to $125,000 each.
And I think there's a medium chart, there's a medium, like five, six, there, there are three levels now.
Right, right.
Yeah, and the slow is pretty much a dinosaur already, I think.
I will tell you this, I know there's some pretty good infrastructure money out there that, that we're, we're considering and watching and looking at to, to help fund some of this, and so that is a good, a good option for us to try to pursue some infrastructure funding on this.
So, council, so you know what I was going to cover a little bit next week, but when I was in DC, we did ask if Congressman Simpson would help put this into a, a bill where they've, they've started doing that again back east, and he is doing that. So hopefully, we, we see something there. As the, as the electric vehicles are rolled out, the infrastructure is just absolutely not there.
Right.
I've got, you know, Texas, I've got a son that lives in Austin, they've bought an electric vehicle, and every day they have to go down, and he gets to sit in his car for an hour and a half while it charges.
Right.
And so it's just not there, and what a colossal waste of time. So this, I think the slow charging, I agree, Chris, is that we shouldn't even be looking and considering a slow charger, because they just don't, don't work, and he's actually using a medium charger, and they're, and are in a 20 minutes to top of a battery.
Right, I was going to say, the mediums, you could, you could plug them in and leave them overnight, and they'd be ready. The other thing is that ISU has just agreed, or planned, to put in some charging stations. Now, I can't recall the particulars, I know Portland Resource Council was working with them, and they are now studying putting them on all their ISU campuses. So, anyway, just FYI, who knows whether or not, for grant purposes, you know, there would be, that'd be a good, an attractive partnership, or what they're finding out, or whatever, just FYI.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, before you move on, you, you've said that there was infrastructure money available, and, and you're talking about money separate from the ARPA?
Correct.
Other grants that could be pursued?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
And possibly some federal?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think the more we talk about electric vehicles, just as a nation, I think you're going to see more and more money become available quickly to address that.
Right.
One of the other priorities that was identified was the city fuel site. We have $800,000 identified for that. Rick had asked the question whether or not that included the, or included the wash facility. That does not include the wash facility, but it does include the infrastructure for the wash facility. This, this project is currently funded through the street reserve fund. However, it will have to get paid back by each and every department that uses the, the fuel. And so as an option or alternative to that, we could use the ARPA funds to, to pay for this, and, and it would have a benefit to all the different departments citywide.
And is that, I was, is that cost still the cost, or has, because I know that that's what we approved, and...
Yeah, last that I heard, I, we're still, we're still right, right there, yeah, so.
Because Tom had come before us and said that he was putting it off because construction costs had risen, if memory serves.
Uh, we just, we just approved the...
But if that's what it is, great, that's good news.
BMGC contract.
That's good news.
So, yeah.
We've already approved it.
Well, I know we did, but, but he said he was holding off on questions.
Linda?
Just out of curiosity, if, and I know the $800,000 doesn't include the wash facility, but if we decide to use ARPA funds, would that sort of help facilitate adding the wash facility in more, sooner, rather than later?
Sure, we could, we could take the funds that we had reserved in, in street reserves and use them to build the wash facility.
And, and can ARPA funds be used for the wash facility, or does that not meet the...
Um, you know, we, we've got that standard allotment. I'm not an attorney, I'm not an attorney, but I have watched Law &amp; Order, you know.
Well, then I'm an attorney, if that's all it takes.
He stated the holiday express.
Yeah, and I have stated the holiday express. Jared just told me that.
$800 includes.
So we have our standard allotment, which is up to $10,000, or $10 million.
Right.
And, and, and basically, what it says under there is any services traditionally provided by the government. So I, I would anticipate that we could, we could cover, cover it under that.
Okay. So, just for me, prior to being willing to consider the wash facility, I would need, I would need, you know, that annual cost per, not, I don't need it per department, but I need the conglomerate cost that we're already paying to wash vehicles. Because, you know, if it's going to take 20 years of payback, maybe not. If it's going to take five months, probably yes.
Yeah, and I, and I think Tom has that data, he did a pretty, pretty deep dive into that when we were considering that, that wash facility, so I will get that information, and we will get that sent out to everybody.
And then the cost of, because the $800 includes the infrastructure for it, but the cost of the...
Right.
And the hoses and the...
Right.
All that.
Cost of the...
Well, because, you know, when I drive through the car wash, it's got the things that go this way.
That's right.
Okay, we, we can get that.
And maybe, as I'm thinking about this now, you know, depending on the cost and projected cost for washing vehicles, that $800,000 might be able to be reduced if it's determined that it's not cost-effective to have a wash facility. And, and I assume that Tom put it in there, because based on his numbers, it is cost-effective, but...
Right. I, I think that he put it on there because the council sounded excited about a wash facility, and then we kind of backed away from it, and then we kind of were excited that we were back away from it. So I think that it's kind of in there for that, but he did not add the building and all of the things.
Right, and the stuff.
But, but we did, we did get direction from council to include the infrastructure.
No, I know, yeah.
Because it doesn't make sense to come back in and tear it all up and put it in later.
No, 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 I, I, right, no, I recall that, and that's, but, but, now that I'm just saying, and it might be given our water situation, that maybe we don't wash our city vehi, you know, maybe I don't wash my city vehicle every two days.
And you don't wash your car.
Maybe I...
I park next to you a lot, and you don't wash your car.
And you know what? It has never failed to get me where I needed to get, even though it might be a bit dusty. And so I, I rest my case.
Sounds good, thank you, Jeff.
Uh, so sidewalks was another one that was identified as a priority. You know, I'm not going to stand up here and say it's going to be the sidewalk down Center Street, or it's going to be the sidewalk down Art Main or Arthur. This is something that we, we've been working on, engineering, planning, GIS, we've all been compiling what that data looks like, and, and we would need to prioritize where they're going to have the most bang for the buck. And so if, if this money is allocated, then we would work on putting together a sidewalk plan. South Fifth Sewering, so this is one that we talked about last time. What it would, what it would include is really, it's kind of hard to see on the, on that map, but it would really include installing some new sewer lines on Piedmont and Catslemetis and Gateway Drives that would help to bring several properties that are currently on septic tank into, onto the city sewer system. It would also, there's, there's quite a bit of development that's happening in this area, and by, by including these, these sewer lines, a lot of these new developed, development areas could be brought on to the new septic, or the new sewer lines, and potentially annexed into the city.
So that's county land right now, then?
Correct, yeah, these are in the county.
So what's, so would there be a mandate that once you get your Piedmont line, that if you own property on Piedmont, current property, that you must hook up?
So, again, this is in the county, but we would have to work with the county commissioners and our legal department, and we'd have to draft up some language that we could work with the county that would help facilitate or require existing, existing homeowners to connect on. I can't tell you exactly what that language is going to look like, and, and whether it's a mandate that you have to do it within 60 days, or if it's a mandate that you have to do it once your septic system fails, you know, we, we'd have to work out those logistics on that.
Jeff, you might mention that we have been working, though, and talking and communicating with the county on this as kind of a partnership type of a thing, if the council decides that they wanted to do something.
Exactly, we've got, our next meeting with them is in, in June, and, but we have been having meetings with certain commissioners, and, and they're interested in, in pursuing something here with us.
And when you say that, you mean they're interested in putting in money? Or just they're interested in saying, yes, Pocatello, do it for us?
No, they've indicated that...
Because there's a difference.
They, they would potentially be interested in utilizing some of their ARPA funds to, to help facilitate some of these areas.
And once they do that, would they be equally interested in annexing to Pocatello?
They've mentioned that in those meetings, yes.
And would we get that in writing prior to making this commitment?
It doesn't matter what they think, it's what the people think, isn't it? Don't the Idaho statutes for annexation require the individual buy-ins?
That is true. Yeah, once they've hooked on and that, we do have an annexation agreement also that we follow through with, that just backs up what the state code already reads, that once they're on a city utility, they are already accepting an, an annexation obligation in the future and will not, will not fight that annexation.
And then those, those properties that would be, that would have to hook up, how would those people, I mean, I guess I'm confused as to why we need to have an LID for the people in Johnny Creek, but we don't have to have, I mean, how are those people going to pay to connect? And what's the cost of that going to be? And how are we going to force them to do it if the cost is astronomical? All those things are the things that I'm thinking about.
I see those costs being the same costs as anywhere in, in our areas. We've had some of those discussions that when their septic tanks fail, and then the letter through the health department is required by, through engineering, and we sign that letter, that they are within the designated distance to a, a line, then the health department also kind of requires them to be hooking up, too. And that cost would be the cost of the property owner versus putting in another septic tank and, and everything, leach fields, to be able to, to hook up to the city.
And what, what is that cost like right now, if that happens? If that happened to my property right now, what would I pay to hook up?
Capacity fees is about $4,200 and then probably another, depending on asphalt patches and everything like that, you're probably another 10 to $20,000, depending on the distance and so forth. I know some of them are reaching up into the 30,000, but there's, uh, some of the higher extremes.
Well, you're talking about the, the piping and everything from the house to the, the line, to the main line, so.
Yes, yes.
And remind, sorry, remind me again how, what the distance is.
300 feet.
300 feet, okay, I thought it was two, but 300 feet, okay.
Josh.
And that's to the property line, not the house.
Right, not to the house, just to the property.
Josh had a question.
Uh, ju- just for my, I don't know the process, so if someone has to hook up, say, you know, I've got 5,000 in the cost for me to hook up to that sewage, uh, is there, you know, payment programs? Does it get attached to their property taxes? What's the process for collecting that? Is it a one time, you gotta do it now, take out a loan if you need to?
That is correct.
But relative to the cost of the damage of a failed septic tank or a new septic tank, that's pretty low relatively speaking, okay?
Yes.
Depends, depends again on, on, on the distance. Um, and, and what's the criteria? What are the criteria or what is the criterion for a failed septic system? A duck pond in your yard or some other test?
Well, it's the percolation tests and that, and when the, the soils have reached that saturation point and everything that they, it will not take any more of the water in that and you have to go and dig.
If you start getting pond in your yard.
So, so does the county, who does that? Who, who runs around testing, perk testing, septic tank lots?
It'll be the, you have the private, private people that, uh, Roto Rooters, Gary, the, all those guys that goes out and then they say, hey, you've got an issue here.
Right.
And then from there, it's directed to the health department.
Right.
And then the health department will tell you, you've got a failed system, you need to.
Right.
Fix your system. And then if that's the case, then they are always, you know, writing us to, the city, are they within a, a distance? And then we give that letter and, and then it's moved forward that way.
But typically, Roto Router doesn't get called until there's some surface indicator.
Or it's backing up in the house or something else.
Mainly it's the frustration of the user.
Right, 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 okay, so, alright.
Rick has a question and then Claudia.
Well, I think one of the advantages of doing a project like this, if you drive down South Fifth and look at the checkerboard.
Yes.
System of city versus county property going down there. If we had a uniform South Fifth Sewering project, I think it would make that property much more advantageous to future development down the road. Much easier for new commercial or private, uh, property to be developed in that area. And it's an, it's an area that's primed for development and for some reason has been ignored for years.
Well, and I, and I don't disagree, but I would want some assurances at the county and that, that then we would be able to annex it.
Oh, you can always annex it if the property owner simply asks for it.
We are working on a, an annexation plan right now.
But if we don't get all of those property owners to do it, then we're gonna, if, if only one comes and says, can you, can I get annexed, we're, we're still in the same checkerboard is my thing, is I'm, I'm looking at getting all of that.
I think to Rick's point, not if they get signed up on the sewage though.
Well, those discussions really truly are happening right now with the county and, and the letters that they have to sign when they hook up and all of that stuff. I mean, we're already doing those. I think it's, it's a good question and because that's, I think the first thing that city staff and everybody said is, look, we're Pocatello, we're not everybody else. And so we want to be, have some assurances of that. So those discussions are happening and it's not something that we can force, uh, right now, but the county will, is definitely helping with and stuff like that.
And now I have another question about capacity, right? So where's Levi? So we sewer all that and then can we handle that?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I just want to, or do we need to add on and expand and, and grow your facility in order to, do you see what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. Right now we have the capacity to handle that through the system. Obviously, as things continue to grow, we will eventually have to do that because that's just the nature of what happens when development goes. Um, as of right now, if we were to run this, this project, we could handle the capacity that's coming through.
Okay.
With the way the system is.
And then the one, one and a half million dollars will cover that or is that just like for designing, planning, engineering?
No, this is for design and construction and, and also there's some areas down in here in some of these, um, mobile home trailer parks that have some pretty antiquated systems and we don't know how they've been maintained. And so we'd actually like to spend some money, maybe cleaning and inspecting those to, to help figure out whether or not, um, there's some, some work that needs to be done in those as well.
Those trailer courts, they, they're on septic as well?
Uh, no.
No, they're not.
They're, they're on, they're on sewer.
Sewer.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one comment on those are private sewer systems. The property owners.
Did you just push it out of the? I like it. What are you doing here?
Sorry, I apologize. Those, those trailer parks are on a private system. They're owned by the property owners, the, the mobile home park. And so as the city, we don't go in there, we don't maintain those, we have no idea. All we know is where it connects to the city sewer lines. So with those, you know, like I said, with that 80,000, it would help us go in and have a private contractor go in, inspect those lines, clean those lines and identify the spots within their private system that would need to be fixed and then help those property owners fix those projects as well.
Okay, I've got Linda, Rick and then Roger.
A lot of ifs. And I don't know, this is kind of after the fact, um, Merrill was starting to say something about an annexation plan and I just wanted to hear the end of that statement. Sorry to go back.
But I didn't, sit down.
Sorry Merrill, I interrupted you.
With planning, uh, we're working with Jim and the engineering and that, we're putting together that now, getting the, the boundaries and that. So here in the next couple of months, you're going to see a city initiated annexation. We've got a couple of private property owners that's already signing on to and working towards getting to where we've got to the interstate and across so that we have those connectivity points and moving forward with the development. So we're not just looking at the sewer action, uh, application and, and utility with water also, but, uh, also we have a plan and working across with, with other people and in discussions with other property owners as we speak to, to, to get that continuity. So that was what I was going to say.
That includes some of our, even some of our own city owned properties.
Yeah, our city owned properties.
So don't go anywhere, Roger's going to jump in front real quick, but I don't think this is the question he had for this.
Well, it is.
Oh, it is, so.
I, I want to know where the city limits are right now and is this, and my question was along with Linda's, how do we not have that tag approach versus the, um, legitimate approach for annexation? You know, Century High School was put out there, but it was a roundabout system and some people.
For continuity, yeah, we have to have contiguous properties and stuff through there. So that's how that was done. South, uh, that, what was going to be the South Valley Development, Southern Hills, uh, that got annexed in that way also. There is an opportunity to get the PRT transit with what we're working on right now. We've got one other property owner to discuss with and we'll be able to get that area in there too. But it has to be the continuity first as we move forward. The city, uh, boundary right now, if you get on the GIS website, it's, it's there and it is up to date.
Okay, but I'm looking at a map right now that I don't have any focal points on for city boundaries.
Okay.
See that big white building? I don't, I don't even know what that is. Is that in the city limits?
The big white building is the jail.
Jail, yes.
And no, it is not.
It's not in the city.
But we're close. And then the white, the white one right across is PRT. So right now, and then across from PRT is Idaho Power, right across there, along there, and then city properties. So like I said, we are, we are just one step across to being able to do that.
So we, we can develop the con, the connectivity.
Yes.
Pretty easily.
We do have a plan.
To these green septic tanks.
We do have a plan moving towards those green areas, the green lines that you're seeing, yes.
And, okay, and so, and we can write into our agreement with the county, by the way, this has to be done by 2026, as I read this.
Correct.
And so we can write into our agreement with the county that anybody that has to have a septic system replaced has to connect. It's just like, it's just like our, our stated.
The other part to this, uh, annexation too, like you said, if you bring it in with different angles, is that if we can get across to when these areas are starting to get in the county, that we're seeing, there's like four of them out there right now that is not contiguous, but if we were across and, and getting there contiguous to that, the county ordinance says if you're contiguous and you're subdividing and in this area of city impact, then they have to come and ask for annexation, uh, request annexation with the city. So there's those tools also in our toolbox to, to get to where we're wanting to get.
And Century High School is out there where?
It's, uh, probably just further past the.
Pocatello, GIS, just, just past that a little bit.
There might be a little bit of it showing up right below GIS.
That might be cap.
Those buildings that are just north of Century High School is what I think that is.
Yeah, because there's Hildreth, it's right underneath that.
Okay, so now I've got Rick, Roger asked his question, then I've got Josh, then I've got Chris and Claudia.
I just wanted to make a quick reminder, you know, we talked about expansion at the WPC site and the possibility of changing the way we're doing things out there, going to the dry, dry method, which we're already have under consideration. And I think that will, that will take care of any potential capacity issues that we might have down the road.
Yeah, no, I, I was just thinking about immediately in order to do this, so.
Josh?
So, I mean, we could spend more hours than I think any of us want to sit here hashing out the details of exactly the plan moving forward. But I guess my question then, you know, there will, I know there will be meetings with, you know, Public Works, with us, with the county, there, there are a lot of steps that I know have to go in to make things happen. So I guess my question for today's purpose is then, based on all the recommendations from a variety of staff who work with, you know, different parts, whether it be the annexation and the sewage capacity and the, you know, the, the environmental impact, how high of a priority is this in the Public Works opinion?
Uh, South Fifth Sewering?
Yes.
Um, I would say it's, it's very high priority.
Like top three of the list that we've been providing, okay?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chris?
Yeah, um, can we get all the moving parts that Josh is referring to and all the ifs clarified, the, the annexation plan clarified, so that all the, well, what if somebody doesn't want to hook? Can we get all of that done? How, how long? And I understand we're dealing with the county, et cetera, et cetera, but, um, what I'm looking at is, um, you know, there was the, I think we were at 79, um, and, um, that left, you know, some unassigned dollars. And so I want to know whether we can get all these ifs around this project lined out, answered, nailed down, so there aren't any surprises.
Yeah.
Fast enough to then make a decision about that, that remaining money and still meet the federal guidelines.
Which remaining money are you talking about?
Well, I thought you said that the projects you had initially listed did not add up to 10.7 mil.
Well, I've got another slide that shows where we, how we get to that 10.7. That'll be the next slide.
Because, because I, I mean, I, you know, I, there are so many ifs around this.
Sure.
For me, at this point, that I, you know, I mean, there are just a lot of ifs that need to be answered.
So you, you keep going around ifs and this is part, and I'm sorry if I might be out of line a little bit, but we talk about all these ifs all the time. I just sat here and explained something.
Right.
I said, within the next two months, you're going to see the annexation.
I understand.
And everything. So from a staff's point of view, those ifs are a lot closer than not ifs. They are moving parts that are moving very rapidly and have been for the last year and, and putting stuff together and comes to, and coming to fruition. So that's what I'd like to, because when I sit here and I, we talk like this and then we get the ifs and stuff like that, then it spins another thing over here that everybody's going, well, who's telling, who, where's, which way we going? So it's, it's, it's frustrating to me and to staff when we, we get into these situations. So this is, this is doable, your ifs are coming together, the county and the city is meeting together on this very topic as others. And we have the health department, we have the ordinances, everything is in place. So those ifs are not really, there, there's still some ifs, but not as many as what I'm understanding you're trying to say.
Right, well, forgive me, you've been working on this for one, for more than a year.
Yeah.
I'm hearing about it for the first time today, so forgive me if I have questions.
Well, no, the questions are fine, but we answered some of these questions, you're still asking more ifs.
No, no.
Sorry, I'm just.
Well, forgive me again, but, but, but saying that people are meeting.
Yes, we just.
Is very different than saying these, this is nailed down. I mean, people can meet about something for an indeterminate.
You're correct.
Timeline. So that is what creates ifs for me. The fact that people are meeting and discussing is very different than having decisions made. So perhaps I wasn't clear, I understand that there are many meetings occurring and Josh alluded to those. However, the, the decisions, the hard and fast, concrete, written down decisions as a result of those meetings have not occurred, as far as I'm understanding.
So, so we've put a lot of research into this and, and done a lot of discussion and, and really put some design towards this. Keep in mind, we have two and a half years before we have to obligate the funds, we have four and a half years before we have to spend the funds. I, I'm fully confident, and we wouldn't have brought this to you as an option if we didn't feel like we could meet that timeframe. And so I, I'm fairly confident that we, that we can and it's a doable project and it will have a, a huge impact and a huge benefit to the water quality in, in Pocatello.
Thank you. Uh, Claudia?
I just have one comment to make about the, the private sewers.
Okay.
And the, um, I just want to make sure that we're treating everybody equally fair, uh, uh, equally fairly isn't even good English, but you know what I mean? Like, because if, if I, if I'm understanding, we're going to spend money to inspect private sewer lines and then, um, if I'm, heard Levi correctly, that then we're going to help those owners do whatever repairs and stuff. And I'm just concerned that we're going to be helping one small element, but other people who have to spend 25 or 30,000 dollars to then connect, that's on them. And I just want to make sure that we're treating everybody the same. If, if, if people have to get a loan to make this stuff happen, then people have to get a loan, everybody should have to get a loan, not, not a select group. Does that make sense? I'm just kind of, I just want to make sure everybody's treated the same, not, not, oh, this guy, you know, owns this trailer court and he has a private sewer, so we're going to help him fix that. And that just doesn't seem fair to me if I'm somebody who then has to spend 30,000 bucks on a bank loan to connect to the sewer because my septic failed. Does that make sense?
Skylar Allen, Pocatello, um, utility engineer. Let me make sure Levi's still over there before I speak. So I, I hope I can answer at least a little bit of that question. So the 80,000 dollars that we're referring to, that we're asking for as part of this is a start in the direction of trying to address some of the private systems. There are a, a lot of private sewer systems that connect to, to our public sewer system. And we do have concern for all of those, but this area in particular, because of the groundwater quality concern, we have a, a particular interest in addressing what the current condition of those systems is and identifying whether or not they are a potential source of contamination to the groundwater. And that's where we're, we're seeking this funding to try and jumpstart that process. At the same time, we are looking at the other private systems throughout the city of Pocatello to make sure that we are doing what we can to try to, uh, up the game a little bit in making sure that the inspections and maintenance are happening the way that they should on those private systems.
And so then, but if I own one of those private systems on South Fifth, for example, and, and the city comes in and does the inspection and, and I've got issues. and, and the city comes in and does the inspection, and, and I've got issues, I'm going to fix those issues. I have to fix those issues, right?
That is the intent of this time.
The city's not going to pony up money.
Yeah, you're correct.
To fix my issues, okay.
The obligation for repair and maintenance of those private systems belongs to the property.
Okay, I just wanted to.
That's identified in City Code thirteen sixteen one oh five.
Okay, I just wanted to.
But those, those private property, or private system owners have a responsibility to maintain their system. But it's in our interest to figure out whether or not they are being.
No, I understand, I was just kind of, I must have misunderstood that we were then going to help them fix that stuff, and I just thought that could be a bunch of money that certain people save and other people have to spend, so. Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, do they have to let us inspect?
Um, you know, I'd have to dig into our code a little bit. Either between our code or, or D E Q, I would anticipate that they would, they would, you know, we would have to work with them and.
And then do they have to fix?
Yes.
Merrill is nodding yes.
They would be required to fix those systems.
All right. Because I think that would be important, again, to have that clarified, so that we don't go in, identify, and then, because it breaks down somewhere else along the line, they say, well, thanks for identifying that we have a problem.
Yeah, they, they have an obligation as, as the owner of that system to maintain it, whether it be through us, whether it be through the county, whether it be through B D, be through D E Q, they have an obligation to maintain it.
And then we could work with them, I assume, as, you know, so that if they couldn't pony up fifty grand tomorrow to fix it, or whatever, that we could work with them as we do with individuals, um, to reach an agreement.
Certainly, our, our intent would be for them to develop a plan, just like we do on our system.
Right.
To move forward and get that, that maintenance taken care of over a timeframe that works both on getting to a reasonably maintained system and on, on the funding side.
But if we don't have the code to back us, then basically we're just kind of crossing our fingers and hoping, but it sounds like we do have the code.
It could be the county needs to.
Or the, or the county does, somebody does.
Refine some of their regulations to get us there. But, um.
Go ahead, Roger.
Okay. My question is, of all these little green lines on here, we can put them all in for one point five million dollars?
So, we're estimating about ten thousand feet of pipe? Is that what we're thinking? Yeah, so these green lines are a start, right? So we, we have identified the areas where there are current septic systems in, that are not on the sewer system. Gateway Drive does have a sewer on a portion of that, um, but there's some significant problems with it. It's extremely shallow and doesn't have the ability to connect the additional property around it. Some of that, those lines are on county roads, and some of them are on private roads, and there's some challenges on that front. This is not a, a plan that we're ready to go construct right now. Uh, it, there's definitely a lot of pieces that still have to be solved. And so what we're asking for right now is direction from council. And if, if this is a, a project that we want to undertake, we think that for one point five million, we can do about seventy-five hundred feet of sewer line installation, which gets the majority of that area to have sewer accessible to those properties to be connected to. We would have to identify exactly where that sewer goes, where it makes the most sense to place it. Uh, this is kind of a preliminary look, concept. And if we are going to have some commitment from council to move forward on this project, then we would continue that work to refine exactly what it looks like.
So, and I'm going to use an if. If, if we can only build seventy-five percent of it, but we need to build a hundred percent of it, part of this is contingent on whether or not the county will participate.
He said seventy-five hundred, not seventy-five percent.
Well, if we got to build ten thousand, and he said seventy-five hundred, I take it as seventy-five percent.
Well, I, I think saying that there's only ten thousand feet of sewer line that would need to be constructed to service that entire area would be inaccurate. What we've identified is about ten thousand feet of line that would be needed to service the little pockets of development that exist there. So, if we're going to look further into the future and what future development brings, there's a lot more sewer than that that would be needed. But this is, would put us started down that path and making those sewer lines available for what's there now.
But I'm, I'm, I'm being asked to make a decision based on a representation that is up there. And so I'm being told that that representation is only about seventy-five percent, I mean, seventy-five percent of what is there is what we can do with one point five million.
I believe that's correct, with what, if I understood what you just.
What we need to do though, so, so we can move on with this, this, uh, thing, what we need, and Merrill is, is right, the questions are all being asked and stuff, we will just get you back in front to have a discussion at a future, in the next month or two, about when we have some of those answers, we will get back in front so that we can get the direction that, that you're looking for, so that some of the answers that are, the questions that have been asked and, and we're getting the answers to, we'll be, we'll be able to have the answers. And so we'll, we will do that. Uh, but Linda had one thing, and then.
This was my question, so.
So we'll move on.
I don't need to delay.
So then, uh, what I did is I tried to take the feedback that I received and, and pass discussions and, and kind of put that together in a, in a, in a recommended projects list. Um, if you look, it, it comes out conveniently right at about seven, right, right at ten point seven million dollars. I did that by adjusting the, the parking lot paving budget a little bit. But, uh, that's, that's kind of the priority that, that I've gotten from the feedback and, and from what I feel like are the most, uh, important projects that we, that we should spend the money on. But, I'm not married to this, and so if you, if you have other ideas, I'm okay with that.
Roger?
We're, we're looking at designing, implementing, and completing ten point seven million dollars worth of projects in the next four, four and a half years. Do we have to go outside of the city to get some of this done? Because it seems like that might be an overload in addition to doing what we should be doing in other areas.
Sure, so, um, you know, you take well number two, yeah, we'll be hiring an outside contractor to drill well number two and build, build well number two for us. Uh, South Fifth Sewer improvements, um, there's, it's very likely that we would hire a contractor to do that work for us out there. So yeah, there's, there's multiples of these that, uh, that, if, if Johnny Creek Sewer is one that you wanted to do, that most likely would be done by, by an outside, an outside contractor.
So, I guess my question is, how many of these are kind of project ready? Because, um, if we want to get going, it, it looks to me like what we trigger as a project, we need to move on first, will, we will get bids, and if those bids come in higher than what we anticipate.
Right, then we're going to have to adapt.
Then we're, it's a bumping down through the system, because you've got ten priorities here, and, uh, it's not impossible, when you look at one point, or ten point seven million dollars, if we have a ten percent anticipation on most contracts that they'll go over, then we're talking one point seven, one million seven thou, seventy thousand dollars.
Right.
So, I guess what I would say is, I think we need to realign the priorities here so that we can accomplish what we think we need to accomplish most. And then if there is a default of some of them coming off because we spent more money than anticipated, we're defaulting to the, uh, uh, less highly valued projects right now.
Okay, Josh, and then Claudia.
My understanding, when you bid out projects, is that you bid with the anticipation of coming in over what would be an ideal number? Is that correct? When you go through that process?
When I, when I budget for projects?
Yes.
Typically, I'll, I'll budget for projects, and we'll, we'll put in a fifteen or twenty percent contingency on those projects.
So, when you're looking at this ten, ten point seven million dollars, you're going to put in that twenty percent contingency, give yourselves that, if that ten percent increase comes in, you're not worried that we're going to have to stop building well two midway in the ground, because you've done the budgeting process to ensure that that's.
Right, and I, I mean, these numbers, a lot of these numbers are just ballpark. I mean, they're, we haven't done a lot of design on some of these, and, and, and some of them are a lot firmer than others. You know, I think John has a pretty good idea that the hundred and fifty thousand for Ross Park roofs is a good number, um, versus s, s, street stormwater. We don't know exactly what projects we're going to do yet, and so a lot of them are just ballpark numbers.
And a follow-up, and then Claudia.
So, so what's expected to come from, and correct me if I'm wrong, this meeting, is that we look at this recommended projects, we say, yes, these projects look correct, this is the priorities that we feel are most important, and then city staff is going to start the, here's how much it actually costs, here's, here's all the other questions, right? And then when they come and they say, okay, we budgeted well two at two million dollars, it actually came in at two point six, right? Then we get to say, okay, do we yes approve that project, or, uh, no, uh, you know, yes, we approve that project, and now instead, we're not going to do the Satterfield waterline construction? Those are ongoing discussions that we'll have to develop. But right now, we are saying, what we're being asked is, these ten, this is it, we like this list, let's start looking at that list.
And I, I, I'm willing to give, like, uh, every six months, give you guys a report on, on where we're at with, with the projects and where we're at with the total budget, um, if, if that helps everybody stay in the loop, I think that would be beneficial.
So Claudia, then Chris, then Roger.
And.
And then Linda.
Okay, so, with regard to this list, um, if we take out the eight hundred thousand for the fuel site, because we've already budgeted that, if we use the ARPA money, then the different departments don't have to pay in, but we've already budgeted for that. So if we take that out, and we take out Brooklyn's playground, because there's, oh, I was pointing, brick disappeared, because apparently there's, there's question, I know, but he leaned back, and I was like, oh, he's gone. Because there seems to be questions about the surfacing material and blah, 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 blah. So if we take that out, we can actually, um, we can actually, I would, I personally would like to see the Johnny Creek sewer project moved up, but I would like to see the revenue-making slide at Ross Park in there, somewhere. So I would take out the city fuel site if I was making this list, and I would take out Brooklyn's playground, playground, because there seems to be too many questions about it, and I would focus resources on the plate, the slide at Ross Park, because it's a revenue generator. And, and it's been down for, this is the third year, and it's going to open soon, and it's still down, and it's, and, um, right. And then I would move the, and I would move the Johnny Creek thing up a little bit. I would move it up five, personally.
Uh, let's see, Chris, and then Roger.
Yeah, um, why isn't the Satterfield waterline construction part of a rate study?
Currently, there, it's meeting the demands and the flow requirements in that area and the fire flows. However, it's been identified that in the future, that some upgrades would need to be done to that to accommodate.
So wouldn't that be a great item to say that can be funded through rate study, so it can come off this list? Because there is another, it's kind of like your example of, you know, there might be infrastructure money that could handle, you know, some of these projects. Seems to me there's already a legitimate funding source for that, whereas, for example, you know, with the water slide, there's no, there's no other, other than city budget, there's, there's no other already built-in funding mechanism in place. So that, I mean, that, that's, would be, my thought would be, let's put that in, in the next rate study, based on what you've just said, and let's put, um, the water slide on this list. And I'm not prepared today to say, you know, this is the priority that I would, I mean, I, I don't, you know, with some adjustment, I don't have problems with most of what's on the list, but I'm not prepared to make a decision about this is the hardcore priority.
Roger?
Yeah, that, that's kind of my point. I, I think, uh, last year when we were talking about Johnny Creek, I think it was on the twenty-ninth of June, I raised the issue that I think there will be infrastructure money available. And some of these projects, if we do them, or we get started on them sooner, they can be supplemented perhaps from infrastructure. I mentioned then that the state had some money for infrastructure, that the, the infrastructure bill was pending and stuff. I still think those infrastructure issues are something we need to be prepared for. And so I would, I would get, you know, well, well two, Johnny Creek, Fifth Street Sewer, some of those things right at the top, so that we are ready to jump on infrastructure money that might come through to us if, if, and, and the project expand. But this is the backbone, I think, for getting us in a, in a position for that, that, that type of stuff. I also think that, uh, you know, John's been working on the getting funding for a slide. John, are you anywhere near that?
I, um, I, I'm still working with a local credit union to try to get in front of that.
So, I would say that if we don't have somebody that steps forward by this fall, that we go ahead and we start the project and we get it done next year. Because, uh, it, it takes a design period, and it takes then a tear-down and build-out period, and we're already three years or four years into this, and that's, that's something that we can do that has a revenue stream, that starts to pay park and recreation back, uh, uh, in some ways they can reinvest it. And, and I think that's important.
I also think it's one of the few true community amenities that we have. I mean, the zoo, Ross Park, the golf courses, I mean, those are amenities versus, you know, picking up garbage. And, and tying in with Mia Kate's presentation on economic development, um, I think making our community affordable and attractive for young people with young children is, um, you know, fits, fits in with economic development.
Oh.
Okay, Linda, and then Josh.
And then me.
And then Claudia.
I, um, am looking at your list, and I have to say, since it's very close to my list, I actually rather like it. However, um, there are a few things that are different, um, and I do, I, I would like to see the, um, slide and tower, um, the Ross Park, um, slide on there. And I was wondering if there's a way that we could maybe tweak this a little bit to get that on there. I do not want to see Brooklyn's playground be removed. I think that's a really important, um, amenity in our community, and I, I would like to see that stay on there. So, I'm not sure, I, I'm not looking at this saying, oh, well, I would take that off and then make room for the things that I want to see. So, it may be tricky, but if there's a way to get the slide on there, I think that's an important one to, to include. I was looking at what else? I, I do definitely agree with the, the top priorities here. And I would like to see the fuel site stay. I, I know that we had talked about another way of funding that, um, through departments, you know, through their budgets, but I think that if we can use ARPA funds, that's a good use of ARPA funds for, um, something that is becoming very necessary pretty quickly. So, um, overall, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with this list. I guess the slide is kind of the main thing, I would like to see if we could work that out. Maybe a little less money in paving. Also, the Brooklyn's playground, rather than just take it off, I think we can get answers to those questions. And if there is money from Port Knuf Valley Partners, that can offset some of the money that we would need to allocate towards it. So, you know, maybe picking up some of these pieces, we could come up with a way to do the slide. And maybe even in combination with, uh, you know, like some community partners, as well as some ARPA funds, maybe there's a way to make that, that work that way. But I, I wouldn't like to see any of these that are up there be taken off.
Okay, Josh?
Just so I understand correctly, this list is directly taken from the feedback you received from council, correct?
Yeah.
But with some other staff input, or?
Yeah.
So, a little bit of staff input and the prioritization, and then after that, what you received from council.
Right.
So, I guess my question then, Mayor, is for you or wherever, what would be, I guess, round two of the opportunity for council, because, I mean, we can, you know, Linda gave, I think, really compelling points, I think we all can give really compelling points for different projects, what do you think would be the best way to then, round two, say, here are the, the priorities, here, it's the thing that we felt was missing?
So, so, good question, so round two is, we've got some agreements that we're going to, council's going to see on well two, I think everybody's kind of resigned the fact that well two, as, as we're moving through it, we'll be seeing those agreements, South Fifth Sewer, from what I've heard, and I think it's clear, there's some questions and some answers that we need to get, and when we get those over the next, I'm hoping, few months, we'll have the, another discussion in front of the council at that time, you're going to see, I, I think we're, and I don't know where the city fuel site is, if I'm going through this, I don't know where those are, I think that, you know, the council will probably have more information on Brooklyn's playground, that's going to come out, in fact, I was going to ask John if he could make those things over the next couple of weeks and email the council what that Brooklyn's playground, $100,000 floor, if it's turf, if it's, what is there now, just to give the council an idea of what it looks like, and I, you know, I think that as we're, as we're going through this, I think this, through this summer, through this year, through next year, I think that we're going to be talking about these projects as, as they come up, and so, round two is, I think we'll have answers on South Fifth, I think we will be hearing some more about the city fuel site, well two, we'll have decisions that we're going to have to be making in the next, it sounds to me like they've opened a bid for the next part of it, so probably the next, not in a week's council meeting, but the first part of June, we'll see some of that stuff, I would think, and so, I think that as we're moving through the year, we're going to have a number of discussions on this, this is definitely a priority the council needs to be weighing in on, and so, I don't think right now you start going, okay, we want to move this or that, I think that it's obvious that the council's interested in, in including the slide, and so, John's probably going to have to pick that up a little bit, and we'll be adding that to the slide, to this here, and then the council will have to make the decision on, on what that looks like, but that's probably, you know, summertime discussion that the council will have, this is not the, the, the final, this is our list type thing in my mind, anyway.
Okay.
So, we'll go Claudia, Chris, and then Roger.
Well, I mean, it, it, but it kind of is, so, well two, to me, is a done deal, we have to have well two, there's no, there's no debating, if it costs two, if it costs two and a half, we're, we're going to have to do well two, done, done story, the South Fifth thing, to me, I'm just looking at the things that, that I can put a question mark next to, and I would not, I personally, I can put a question mark next to the fuel site, because whether we use ARPA funds or departments pay in to fund it, it's going to get done, it's getting done, we've already approved that, so that, that, to me, has a question mark, I wouldn't remove any money from sidewalks, because the sidewalks in town are falling apart, and as the curbs, and we need to get that done, I mean, that, that is visually very impacting when you drive through town and/or walk through town, the, 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 I, I, I don't see, I would rather than remove money from sidewalks, I would remove money from the repaving of the city lots before I did the sidewalks, I think the sidewalks impact those people who are disabled a lot more than repaving the parking lots does, and with regard to the Satterfield waterline, I, I, Chris brought up a good point, so maybe we could, if that, if that's something that we're looking at that has to be done in the future, could that be part of the rate study, because that would free up half a million dollars right there, so, it's not that I want to get rid of any of these things, or that I don't want to do Brooklyn's playground, but if I look at Brooklyn's playground and I look at the water slide, one of them is a revenue maker that then allows Parks and Rec to reinvest, and then Parks and Rec can do Brooklyn's playground if that's the, the case, I'm just trying to figure out the best way to spend the 10.7, not that I don't want any of these projects, I'm just, but there's some that we absolutely have to do, and then there's some that we can, that one could possibly fund another, and so that's where I'm, that's where I'm at, so, as long as I know that this list is not coming off the mountain on a stone tablet, I can, I can, I can live with this meeting today, but if this is, you know, if God's sending this down, then, then I'm, I, I still think that this list needs to be adjusted.
Okay, Chris, and then Roger.
Yeah, I have a request of, of you, Mr. Mayor, and, and Mr. Mansfield, I've noticed, well, you've gotten a ton of input and conversation today, and I've noticed that you've been very carefully taking a lot of notes, which I appreciate, and my request is that we allow Mr. Mansfield to go back, discuss with staff, think about all the notes that he's taken, and come back to us in whatever he says is a reasonable timeframe with a, a modified proposal similar to this, I, I really appreciated the, you know, looking at the data that, that went into, I mean, all the, you know, all the information that went into you coming up with, you and your staff coming up with these 10 recommendations, I appreciate that, I think it was an effective process, I think it was an efficient process, I think it was a respectful process, and I would, I would like to see him have the opportunity to come back to us, having, having done the homework that he believes is necessary, and, and what would be, you know, if I get, if my request is granted, what would be a reasonable timeframe, from your perspective, two months, three months, whatever, tomorrow, whatever?
Twenty minutes and they'll be back.
I can't commit to a time, and I'm going to have to kind of digest what your request is, because I, I, I thought we were, I thought I'd already done that, I mean, I'd taken the input that I got, and I came up with the list, and, you know, I didn't expect to be, you know, granted, you know, the, the 10 commandments, stone tablet type deal, but I was hoping, you know, we'd tweak one or two there, and we'd be good to go and off, off to the races, and so, I, I don't know what else I can do to...
Well, Jeff, what we'll, what we'll do, because we know we've got to come back with the South Fifth Sewer improvements, anyway, when we do that, I think we should be able to have a, I mean, at that point, council should, or council staff should be able to do that, so, and I would say in the next few months, you know, maybe three, but in the next few months, we're going to be back in front of the council with, with some of this, anyway, so.
I mean, we may know more about infrastructure grants at that point, we certainly, based on what, what Merrill explained, we will know, we will be farther down the trail relative to the annexation plan, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and so, so, you know, so there are a lot of variables that, you know, that did get, that exist, and I think, speaking for myself as a councilperson, you know, there are some clear options here, relative to rate study, other funding sources, et cetera, et cetera, and so, but, I don't know that you need to sit here and have six of us try to make a group decision about, I mean, that could take forever, and that's why I was suggesting that you take the input, go away, think about it, do your homework, whatever, come back a little, you know, with another proposal that will hopefully reduce the amount of torment that we put you through.
We'll, we'll get that done in the next two or three months, Roger?
I want to go on record that meetings matter, and I want to register that I think the Johnny Creek sewer project is something we've talked about for years, for years, and I think that numbers matter, and when it's rated number nine of the priorities, it needs to move up the list, because I think there will be some that will be bumped, and I think there's a matter of equity, the Johnny Creek people have been paying taxes for years, 40 years, some of them, I believe, and I think it's a matter of equity that we begin to address the sewer problem there, and that it needs to have, and I, I think, Skylar, you said you were doing a preliminary engineering, is that right, one time? So, I just think we need to get it up on our priority list so that it gets addressed before some of these other things, I think the repaving is probably the right position because it could absorb like you did, the, the, you know, if we can't pave all of our lots, that we can pave some of them, and if we have to absorb and say, we're not being able to repave because we just run out of money.
I wouldn't say that these are in any set of certain priority, I mean, I didn't misread.
But I'm saying that, I think they are a priority in terms of staff investment and energy, to get them to us with a measurable definition that we can decide on, and, and I'm, I'm saying that I want the Johnny Creek, and I think I've articulated that, I think it was put in by three council members already, I think I have consistently put it up there, so that's four right there, that have consistently put that up, so, I would, I would say that staff energy regarding this list, that has to be one that becomes energized.
Okay, Rick?
To me, there's a couple of projects that are obvious, I agree with Claudia, well two, it's a done deal, we got to have it, we got to spend that money, whatever it costs, the roofs at Ross Park, it's only $150,000 project, and if we don't do something, and we get one of those gut buster storms in summer, we're liable to have a lot of interior damage to those buildings, I think that needs to be an immediate priority to get taken care of, the third one's the Brooklyn's playground, I saw John raise his hand a minute ago, Mr. Mayor, when you were talking about that, did you have some input on that, John?
If it's okay with the mayor. Mayoral Council Members, John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director, I just wanted to kind of clarify on, on Brooklyn's playground, so, and I do remember mentioning in a previous meeting, we've had some discussions just at the staff level, no further than that, boy, this is very expensive, is there a different product that could, you know, maintain the mobility characteristics and the fall cushioning characteristics of the current product, but give us more longevity for our significant investment, so we were looking into that, but after some careful consideration, and also some factors related to another major amenity that I think I've got a, a successful partnership for adjacent to that site, it is our intent to replace that with the same poured-in-place rubber, so I just wanted to relay that to the council, I was going to send an email, but just let you know verbally.
And that $100,000 covers that?
Um, that was, I, I would like a chance to get another firm estimate on that, I, I know in, in one of our partnership projects that I just pitched, the original estimate, and then COVID happened, and all the supply chain and everything, it went up 30-plus percent.
So, John, in a couple of months, we're going to be back here again, having the same discussion, I think, will you have us some correct numbers at that point?
Yes, sir.
Will you be able to find out from the?
For the slide as well.
The slide for the, the Brooklyn's playground, and, and see if the, what is it, the, our valley, our?
Portne Valley Partners.
Portne Valley Partners, I changed the name on it, and I forget what the name is now.
The Brooklyn Buddies Discussion, I had heard a $200,000 figure for doing it, that was the reason they'd gone back to look for turf, but we need to do something fairly quickly, because the surface is rapidly deteriorating at that park, the sun is not treating that surface well at all.
So can you get?
We've got some serious deterioration.
Some answers from them as well, and, and see what we've got, thank you.
Could you add to that, maybe they've got a more sun-resistant surface now, you know?
Yeah, I think.
That was several years ago, and it might...
Knowing what we know now, I, I think more consistent resealing early on, this was kind of before my time, and a lot of, you know, the park staff had no experience with this, and it was a community build, I think we can do better with it this time around.
Okay, super, are you done?
Yeah.
Then I got Josh, and then I got Chris, and then it sounds like Claudia.
If, if Claudia has a question for, for John, before he goes, will he?
Well, no, no, not, not for John.
Okay, so, Jeff, you said that these projects are not per se in a, we're doing this, then we're doing this, then we're doing this, okay, so, I think that we have up there five projects that are in the million, the million-dollar marker above, and I think that all five of those projects, we probably could easily spend $10 million apiece on each of those, and have plenty to do, whether that be Johnny Creek, whether that be the Fifth, Fifth Street Sewer improvements, whether that be just sidewalks in, in Pocatello, we also have six, if you include the slide, priorities that all are, are a little bit less in, in those amounts, and I think that those projects, I mean, I know that they're going to happen simultaneously, we're going to start getting bids and designs for all five of the incredibly large product, projects, but I don't think we should say any of the small projects, I don't think anyone's implying this, but that the small projects should go away as well, because as Rick said, that $150,000 for roofs at Roth Park, Ross Park, are going to make a tangible improvement to the lives of people who use that facility, that those, those small projects make immediate impacts that people see, that we say, I mean, don't get me wrong, the sewer projects are important, and people will see that, it's also going to make people, you know, there's going to be a lot of difficult, both politically and frustrating conversations about the Fifth Street Sewer improvements, and I think that we have the opportunity not only to invest large amounts of this money in large projects, large designs that can meaningfully improve the long-term standing of the city, but we should also take advantage of the opportunity to do small projects that get an incredible amount of return in the happiness and livelihoods of citizens, and so I think I, I really enjoy just the collective list, whatever shuffle order, I mean, we know that there are ones that we have to do, there are ones that we're going to be in discussion about what end up happening exactly, but I really appreciate the balance of the two, and the ability to improve meaningfully people's lives in the long run, but in the short term, allow people to see a little bit of relief that comes from those in a time when I think a lot of people are desperate for that relief.
And potentially save money.
Well said.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris, and then Claudia.
Yeah, Rick, I don't know if this is kind of where you were going, but your, your comment about some of these are done deals kind of took me to the notion that I would be amenable to seeing an agenda item rapidly to approve some of these, and I think well two is a clear one, I mean, I don't know that we need to put off approval on well two for three months based on, you know, annexation questions on South Fifth, so I, I would be very amenable to seeing well two come before council rapidly, I would be amenable to seeing the roofs at Ross Park coming before council rapidly, and I think it's not, it doesn't have a very, you know, catchy title, but I, I, I believe that street stormwater is, I mean, again, we, we, we can either pay to fix stuff after it's been ruined, or we can be proactive, so I would, me personally, I, I would be very amenable to seeing well two, the roofs at Ross Park, and street stormwater, whatever that ends up being, making progress on that, coming before council rapidly.
Okay, Claudia, and then Josh?
And, and I'm going to have to leave, because I've got to go back to court, but I, I'd like to see the...
Water slide.
Well, no, I mean, we've, we've talked about the water slide, but I'd like to see what it would cost to work on, to fix that clubhouse at the Riverside Golf Course, because I think that that is another, I, because I think, I, I mean, I couldn't have said it better than Josh did, I mean, we have to balance it between things that are beneficial, but people can't see, and things that people can see, and I think that it's, that, that he, I mean, that was just brilliant, really, and so, and I, but I think the Riverside Golf Course clubhouse is one of those things that is very impacting, and the golf course is, again, revenue-making, so, if we can make revenue, then we can reinvest that revenue, so I just want us to consider somewhere in this list, adding the Riverside Golf Course, because that's been talked about since, you know, Moses was a child.
And, and there is some money... And there is some money already set aside toward that. I don't know how much, but ten years' worth of.
Only a couple of years, but.
Only a couple of years' worth.
But, so let's go with Josh and then we'll wrap this discussion up. I know Claudia's got to go. Thank you for being able to jump it over here.
Yeah, no, no. And I can come back if y'all are still here. God, please say no. Please say no.
The way we like to beat things, we might still be here.
Please say no.
Josh, go ahead.
My last, real quick. So, you know, Chris said that she would be amenable to having those agenda items come. My understanding is that they are going to come in pieces, that this list is a, we've given our input, you now have kind of our thoughts, our direction, you're going to begin those projects, getting bids, getting through phases. We will see agenda items coming in pieces and you'll be giving us updates. Here's how much we spent, here's how much is allocated, here's how much we're projecting, as you discussed, you know, six months, so many months down the road. But we're going to start seeing agenda items coming through on those things in the next couple of months.
So on some of these, yes. I mean, Well Two, it's like you said, Well Two is kind of down the river. We've approved that and so you're seeing those come up and stuff. The city fuel site, that has been approved by council, by all rights. That's been approved. And so you'll start seeing some of those things come through. If the council's interested in bumping the roofs at Ross Park, I think it's a great idea. I don't disagree with anything that's been said. We will start working on that. I'll have staff start working on that. And if collectively the council says we want to do, we want to see what that is and bring it to us, then we will start moving on that because it's something that we're going to have to be doing anyway. Brooklyn's Playground, we will have some discussion about that and John's already given us a few things. And so, yeah, you're going to see some of these coming through, but I would not have brought the roofs at Ross Park. Quite frankly, I wouldn't have brought that in the next month or two because the first I heard, let's get it done, and that's an important one, was when you were saying something, was today. And so we'll, we'll start working on that and it will, it will come up, yeah.
And my point is that I think, for me, the eleven things that we've talked about, I'm interested in, I want to see, I want them to, I want to start working on those projects and I want them to come before council.
Sounds good. And we'll.
I think that's the shared sentiment.
You'll be seeing some of these. And then Linda, I wanted to.
Can I come in real quick?
Yes, you got to leave.
I just want to thank Jeff for all the work. I know that this was, I mean, I know that this was a lot of work and I don't want to discount just because I'm suggesting different things, that I'm not trying to discount any of your work or any of the work that you put in there with the rest of the staff. And I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, thank you and please don't be here when I get out of court.
Yeah, we're going to try not to.
Please, please, don't be here.
Linda, and you're breaking my rule, but go ahead. I've lost control of this. I said we were done.
Just a real quick comment, though. I would just caution us on like going ahead with certain things because not looking at what that does to the list. I can't necessarily just suddenly start picking projects because then we are like prioritizing and kind of changing the list by doing that. So I have to know what impact, if we move forward with agenda items on certain things, then we're saying those are the top priorities on our list. So I just think we need to be careful.
These will come in at a study session probably before we just throw it on top of a decision-making.
Yeah, I don't want to look at them in an isolated way.
You'll be able to see it, but we'll get some numbers. I wouldn't have moved, like I said, I would not have moved on the Ross Park roofs until after today because, and I'll get John working on it and stuff so that he can come to the study session and present it, so. Okay, thank you very much, Jeff.
You bet.
With that, we have Agenda Item Five, councilor, are we okay? Do we need a break? I know, breaks?
I need a break.
Okay, we're going to take a break and then we will be right back, whatever right back means. We'll do this, I know Chris will be right back, so.
Jim's going to fake a heart attack for the end so it doesn't go too far.
Thank you very much for joining us after the break again. We will go ahead and hopefully be able to fulfill Claudia's request that we'll be done before she's out of court. So I don't know if her court's an hour or if it's ten minutes and so we'll see what happens.
I think she said it was about fifteen.
So with that, with that, we'll move to Agenda Item Five, Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040. Planning and Development Services staff will be present to provide information and receive feedback from the council regarding Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jim Anglesey, Long Range Planner for the City of Pocatello. And I'm pleased to present to you some information and update regarding where we're at in the comprehensive plan. This past year has been a busy one to go out and garner information from the public and hopefully we, within this past six months, have gone through that data and hopefully we give you a good idea of what the community is telling us that they would like to see in the next twenty years for the city. So to start off, I want to remind you as council what are, what our goals, what our mission is and what we're calling Our Valley, Our Vision is. So Our Valley, Our Vision is, has a twofold mission. One is to provide the city with a common planning process that's focused on equity, education, and empowerment for our community. We want the community to actively participate in the planning process and decision-making. And we believe that through the creation of community plans and constant engagement that we can hopefully empower the community to be more actively involved. The second part of Our Valley, Our Vision is to create a suite of community plans to guide future, the future vision and direction for the Portnife Valley.
Jim, real fast, I just want to make sure, before we get too far into it, I want to understand, how does this presentation collaborate with or augment the strategic vision or the long-term vision that you presented to us two, three months ago?
Regarding the downtown plan?
Correct. Is that, is the downtown plan a, how do the two relate before we get into this? Or maybe you'll answer it later, you can tell me.
Yeah, so this is a good spot.
Okay.
This idea of Our Valley, Our Vision is to provide a suite of community plans, the downtown development plan being one of those.
Perfect, thank you.
And so all, all these plans, the comprehensive plan, downtown plan, and any potential future plans should all interact together as one vision for the community.
Perfect, thank you.
So the comprehensive plan in all of this is very much the general umbrella plan that should touch at a three thousand foot level all these other plans. This is the one that should act as a general playbook to potentially help guide and gain interest for other community plans, be it neighborhood plans, parks plans, et cetera. The comprehensive plan outlines the community's vision. It outlines potential goals and strategies that could achieve those visions and goals being attainable and, or smart goals that we don't really see in our current comprehensive plan. Our current comprehensive plan, it really, its foundation is the state requirements of what a comprehensive plan should include. And what we're doing this time around is flipping that on its head, making the vision elements top priority and the state requirements being the background gears to that. So what you'll see is those community vision elements being raised to the level of people's understanding and ideas, not just what the state requires of us. So what have we done in the past year? In 2021, we had several opportunities to engage with the public. This included events that we hosted ourselves as well as community events that were already going on. Of all these events, we attended twenty, eight of which were our own open houses. And again, we wanted our outreach to be equitable. And so what we did, we sent out invitations at least to our open houses, to every single household in the city. And, and at those open houses, including our online, we garnered two hundred and fifty attendees. And so this is the nature of community engagement, is you put a lot of work into it and you get some input. But, but it, we have improved a lot since last comprehensive plan and I'll go over We engage the public in several different types of activities. And I want to go over those before I give you the results of what we saw from the community. And you'll see these in some of these images of what we're, what we're starting to see. The first, the first activity is what we called our Vision 2040 Board. This gave the community an opportunity to write whatever they wanted on what their vision for Pocatello is and what Pocatello could be in the year 2040. We saw people from all ages participate in this activity, from, from kids that wanted flying cars to more things that could be done, such as revitalization for downtown. The next one, we had a map of Pocatello and we asked people, what was your favorite place in Pocatello? We wanted to get an idea of where, the locations that people valued in the city. And out of two hundred and seventy responses, both online and in person, this is the map of the results that we saw. And looking at that, the most important place to the community is our downtown, followed closely by City Creek, Idaho State University, and several of our parks and open space areas. Our next activity is what we call community design. This represents the community's preferred type of development, design, and amenities that they'd like to see in the city. There were four boards, four different topics, housing, parks and recreation, businesses and services, and street design. And I provided for you here the top five in each of those categories that were selected. In housing, people wanted to see more mixed-use development and small, single-family lots. Parks and recreation, this was, I'll add, the most touched board. People, and you'll see this throughout this presentation, that people value very strongly recreation amenities in the city. And they'd like to see a lot more of that. The top one being the Greenway Trail Improvement and Development, as well as our trail systems in and around the city. Businesses and services was the least touched and majority of people wanted to see public market, specialty grocers, opportunities in the city, as well as restaurants being tied to that. And then street design, people want more opportunities for bike lanes and more canopy cover on our streets.
What, can you tell me what artist, it has Makerspace, what is Makerspace?
Makerspace is our flexible workspaces that the creative class or budding business opportunities have a place before they can purchase a brick and mortar. So think tanks, innovation labs, things like that. Our next activity was area amenities. This gave, so what we did, we had open houses in public schools throughout the city, seven of those open houses. And each of those areas, we broke that out and wanted people to tell us what amenities they'd like to see in their general area. And this map shows a combination of all those put together. And what we're seeing that people would like in their general areas is one foothill development to be limited, right-of-way improvements on existing infrastructure, especially the older parts of town and major corridors to be improved, increase of parks and open space, especially along the Portnife River and the Highland Neighborhood. And development opportunities, as you see on the map, there is a large concentration of amenities in the downtown area that people would like to see improved or included. Our next activity was funding priorities. We set up boxes, ballot boxes of very, general topics that people could vote on what they, how they'd like funding priorities to be. And this graph is in any particular order, they have their own percentages. But the largest funding that the community would like to see is more of a focus on parks and recreation. And like I said, you'll see this, you'll continue to see this throughout, throughout this presentation.
Yeah, get with it, John, what is your problem?
John's head, John's head's starting to grow and look at this.
He's just getting a big head.
When I get to the survey, I will say almost every single response had in it some type of recreation as a value to the community.
Which is partly a reflection of the, many of the type of people who are drawn here in the first place. I mean, that's the thing about statistics, it's like.
As I had mentioned in my presentations regarding the downtown plan, the three major assets to this city is access to nature, our downtown core, and the university. And I believe that our outreach in the comprehensive plan complements that very well. So our community values survey, we hosted this in July through October. And these are the questions that we asked. They were very general. What do you love about Pocatello? And what you see could change? What is the biggest struggles that Pocatello faces? And these six questions are, those two questions reiterated back and forth. And we did that on purpose because we wanted to see what type of questions we got from the community, asking the questions different ways. So we got eight hundred and sixty-two survey responses. And I will bring up the fact that previous comprehensive plans were about in the hundred to two hundred response range. One of the major factors, I believe, was this is the first time we went to online response, getting online responses. But with this eight hundred and sixty-two, we did get a response rate of one point five percent, which you could say is statistically valid. This, what you see on this slide is the demographics of the people that responded. A majority of our responses were millennials that responded, with close behind that middle-aged or Gen X generation.
Question, does that, those age brackets, is that a fair comparison of the actual demographic of the community?
Yes, the census groups them differently. And you can see that on here, that the 2019 American Communities Survey, sixty-two percent of our population is ages eighteen to sixty-four. And so our eighteen to sixty-four group makes up an overwhelming majority of the responses. So the way that they group, the census groups versus the way we group is a little bit different, but it's, it's pretty close to accurate on at least the age range.
And the biggest problem probably being the under eighteen didn't really respond much.
Majority of those were middle schoolers when we went to the middle school. Education, as most community outreach, majority were those that had higher education that participated and that were, had the time to participate.
Have access to the internet.
Exactly. Exactly. We did try to help offset this by going to food banks and other opportunities where people of lower income may be. And it's really difficult to get that input because they have other priorities, other focuses that they are focusing on. So that's always going to be a struggle that we're going to have, that we hope will improve in the future. The same with income, people of a higher income have more disposable time to dedicate to community events, and it's not any different to this. Ethnicity and gender, we're pretty on spot on those, minus the Hispanic or Latinx community, we weren't able to get in to that group as well as we wanted to. And living situation, most of our respondents were property owners that lived in the city of Pocatello. Small amount of 18% were renters and 11% business owners. So after six months of looking through the data from the survey and open houses and other activities that we had, we went through all of that, and we hope that we have captured what the community has told us by creating these, what we call vision elements from the community. And so according to the community, in 2040, they want Pocatello to be, or already is, outdoor-oriented, economically robust, environmentally resilient, connected, safe and accessible, equitable and collaborative, and have authentic, affordable neighborhoods, and embody creative placemaking. And I'm going to go over each of these to tell you what those all mean, because those are pretty generic, broad strokes. And the way I'm going to do this is kind of show you what, kind of what we gathered from the data and give you kind of a sampling of survey responses. And I will provide a disclaimer, don't take any of these personally. This isn't a reflection on anybody's work in the past years. This is what the community sees needs to, what they would like to be for Pocatello in the future. So there's a lot of things that may rub you the wrong way, but just, that's my disclaimer. All right. Like I said, the community overwhelmingly values outdoor recreational opportunities. So this is outdoor-oriented. Our community is nestled along the banks of the Portnife River and located near the gap between two prominent mountain ranges, the Portnife and the Bannock. This backdrop instills a sense of pride for the residents of Pocatello who have expressed their love of exploring the natural environment through many diverse forms of recreation and leisure. The beauty that both citizens and visitors to Pocatello experience every day is an amenity that is unique to our valley. A prominent theme identified throughout the public outreach process was that our community loves to connect and play outside. What you see here are some of those bullet points of what outdoor-oriented means to the community. This means parks and amenities, connected trail system, a greenway system, outdoor spaces for people of all ages and backgrounds, and continued support for the river vision and conserving our natural amenities and mountain vistas. Where Pocatello may lack, or things that may be a conflict are trail user issues, the overdevelopment of our benches, a deferred maintenance of our park system, and a lack of quality public spaces. I'm not going to go over these direct quotes, but I provided those for you, and if you have questions on them, just interrupt me. The second one is economically robust. One essential key to the success of Pocatello is strengthening the city's economy. Pocatellans want to see increased high-quality jobs and wages distributed over many different industries. Pocatello needs to strengthen existing businesses and attract new diverse businesses. Retention of local talent, including the employment pool leaving Idaho State University, is key to having the workforce available to fill and expand the job market. Out of this, Pocatello may lack the idea of the lack of entertainment, especially nightly entertainment. We heard a lot of, the city closes down at between 5:00 and 7:00, and there's nothing to do after that. We heard a lot of that. And the idea that the city has a lack of vision and change and is small-minded. Again, this isn't anything personal to any of you. Environmentally resilient. Climate change and social inequity are major threats to community resiliency. Drought, flooding, and other climate-related issues increase risk to citizens already vulnerable due to social inequity. Becoming more resilient, anticipating and addressing community threats not only holds the potential to save lives and money, it also encourages social equity and connectedness, fostering Pocatellans to grow and recover in ways that make citizens stronger than before. Citizens have a strong connection to the natural and man-made environment, such as parks, greenways, and the trail system. There was a sentiment of increasing preserving water quality, large focus on our river restoration efforts, and the desire to address the shifting climate in our area, especially as the state is in drought. So looking at the ability to increase awareness for drought-tolerant landscaping and providing infrastructure that may be more environmentally sound. Connected, safe, and accessible. The community wants to connect new and existing greenway trails to the overall network, including these provided in the foothills. Pocatellans are, also desire safe, affordable, efficient, accessible, and responsive transportation as an alternative to the automobile. Mobility choices, infill, and increased density will promote a well-connected, walkable, and accessible community. Pocatello is burdened with the perception of having safety issues. Mitigating those concerns will improve the image of our city and, in turn, become an ever-increasing place that people will want to live and work. I'll just go through here, since we want to get out of here. Equitable and collaborative. The community wants to be more involved in the local decision-making process. They also want to see the city collaborate at a higher level with ISU, the tribes, the school district, and other government entities. Providing an equitable community engagement initiative and empowering the community to participate in the decision-making process is key to building trust and enabling the community to take pride and ownership of their community. And like I discussed at the beginning of this presentation, it's our hope that our valley, our vision can be instrumental in this effort, this desire of the community to engage, and the city to engage at a greater level with other entities, organizations, and the public at large. Authentic and affordable neighborhoods. The protection and improvement of our community neighborhoods is critical for Pocatellans. There is an ever-increasing concern of our community being priced out of the market as well as not being able to find affordable housing. Our neighborhoods, especially those surrounding downtown, are historic and have unique characteristics that make them desirable and thus valuable. Protection of these unique characteristics, ensuring neighborhoods have quick access to amenities such as parks and food, and providing relief in the cost of housing is paramount for the community.
Yeah, Roger. I didn't want to make it during economic development, but I saw a statistic where Pocatello, mainly Idaho and Florida were the places, but Pocatello is rated as the ninth overpriced place in the United States for housing. Boise was up there, Idaho Falls was up there.
Coeur d'Alene was on there.
Coeur d'Alene. And then, most of the others were in Florida. But I think that's something that we've got to be cognizant of and do our due diligence to try to find a sweet spot there for more affordable housing.
Not only that, but it, I mean, when relatives of mine who live elsewhere saw that, you know, they were like, thank goodness you bought your house a while ago, because when that bubble bursts, you know, and that's, you know, people, when you go online and look for what are the best communities to look at retiring, and in my case, you know, that's overpriced housing. I mean, the recommendation over and over and over again is, don't buy a house, and for young people too, don't go here because you're going to be overpaying and you're risking being underwater. And, you know, and I think with lists like the one Roger's talking about, that really makes, that is actually a big barrier to economic development because, and building a workforce.
And as you may have seen throughout all of these, these play together, they aren't separate ideas or elements, they work together, and they should work together. And finally, creative placemaking. Placemaking is more than making a place beautiful, it is the creation of places built to enhance the human experience. Pocatellans want a city that is unique and special, that they can be proud of. Placemaking is a process of intertwining public spaces with the people who experience it in a positive and uplifting way. This process creates a strong desire to belong to and shape our community. This element is very much an umbrella for a lot of different things, but most of it comes down to creating places of value that people will take pride and ownership of the community, and that they can identify with places. And so what we're going to do with all of these vision elements is to start building goals and strategies to implement some of these ideas that people have told us, that are digestible in the next 20 years. They need to be not aspirations, they need to be actual goals. And so in the coming months, we will be working on building those, compiling them, working with our focus group to get continued feedback on those. And it's something that we like to come back and share with, as we go through that process with you, and get your feedback on those goals and strategies moving forward. The timeline, we like to get to a point where we have a final draft ready for, in October, and go through the public hearing process and potential adoption at the end of the year. And so these are the things that you'll be seeing in the future. Any questions that you may have on any of this, I'd be more than happy to go through that with you.
Roger has a couple. First, I really appreciate this, and I would ask that you would send us your narrative, because that fills us out. So if we could get your narrative emailed to us, that would be helpful to round this out. The second thing was just a thing I was thinking about, housing. And one of the things I hear over and over from people who are aging, and it's not just people who are way old, but is that we have very few ranch-style houses in Pocatello. And we have, most of our houses have upstairs, downstairs, basement-type stuff. And a lot of people want to have an option of not having that kind of house, because when they're downsizing, when the kids leave, they just really look for a one-level house. So I'd just make that comment.
Yeah.
Chris? Yeah, I was smiling, Brett, because shortly after you arrived, I was sitting in your office and we were talking about your vision of what a comprehensive plan would be under your direction and how you would proceed and what the result would be. And I have to say, even though that was several years ago, seems like at least, you did everything in this, you and Jim and the other folks involved, everything that you said, the comprehensive plan would be under your direction is what this represents. And it was, you know, data-driven and, you know, far, far more in-depth, community involvement. And I really, A, I appreciate it, but B, it tells me a lot about you and your department under you, that you can tell me months in advance what you guarantee, not the content, but the product and process. And here it is. So my admiration to you, and obviously, Jim, you know, I've expressed to you my admiration for your efforts and how I've seen you taking on more and more and more in the time I've been around, and admiration to you as well. And I know there are many people behind the scenes who I, you know, who deserve personal thanks, so please convey my personal thanks to those people as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Cheatham, and then Linda.
You know, I attended every one of the open houses that these guys held. And I know they say it was a great community response, but I was bitterly disappointed. Five or 10, 15, 20 people show up after all the effort they put in to get the word out and spread these events across the entire community. So it was literally a walking distance for almost anybody in the community to attend. I was really disappointed, the community didn't turn out, and more people didn't express their feelings about the kinds of things they were trying to find out. It surprised me, and I'm disappointed.
I think, I've forgotten which, on which page it was, but in communities that I've lived in where there would be a lot of turnout, it was part of the historical community ethos. I mean, it was something that, it was just part of the community's DNA, that people showed up and people's input mattered, and people's voices were heard when they talked. And I think, you know, if I, I think that was demonstrated in one of the bullet points in here at least once, if not a couple of times. And so I think, I agree with you, but I wasn't, I was disappointed but not surprised, but I think this is a great first step at beginning to build that kind of pervasive community awareness that I matter as a person and they actually want to hear what I have to say.
That's exactly right. I think a lot of what you saw is what people have been used to as far as community engagement in Pocatello. And we tried to do it differently, and we will continue to do more of it. And as we do more of it, you'll see more participation. It's a learned thing. And so, you know, people have to feel like they're included and they're valued and they're listened to, and they have to have opportunities. I think, you know, those opportunities haven't always been present. And we've had some things like, you look at like the Terry First outreach that we did a couple of years ago, and that was successful, and that was really a start of what we're trying to do here and progress that. So I think you'll see more engagement as we are doing it more frequently.
Also, add to that, that I think there's a shift in how people give feedback, as you said, you know, you offered the online option, and a lot of your response was from millennials, and many of them are not going to come in person to a meeting. millennials, and many of them are not going to come in person to a meeting. They'd rather, you know, go out and ride their bike or something, but they will do online surveys or feedback or, you know.
Maybe.
And so I think, you know, you see that in the numbers in terms of the people that participated. I mean, I agree, and I'm disappointed, and I would like to see that grow, and I think it will over time if we change, you know, the thinking on that. But I also think we see the difference in the numbers between the people that came to open houses versus the people that did online surveys. There was a much larger number there.
And I'd say that they were different people. The people who came to the, to the open houses were different people than who did the online.
Yeah, I would agree.
And like Jim said, we tried to do a lot of different types of outreach, and we would, there were communities that we had to go to to get the feedback, and we utilized our CDBG staff and their connections to some of the, there were agencies that, that helped serve the underserved. And, you know, we used them to help get some of that outreach that we normally didn't get, so.
But actually, my comment was something different. I just wanted to respond to that part, but I just want to thank you all for all this work.
Give it up, Brian. You're not in control.
I just think, if I could finish, I think it's just tremendous. I loved the downtown plan. I love this plan. I love, you know, where we're going with this. I love that they are sort of, you know, that they work together, they complement, they supplement. It's just a phenomenal job, and I appreciate the efforts to reach out to the community and get feedback. And I know that you're working on, on building that, so thank you very much.
Okay, so I've got Roger, and then Chris. Oh, I was just going to say, one of the things, it's a reality, is that you did this in a time where people were restricted in their activity, and I think that's a big contributor to why people didn't get out in person, is that they've never been limited in for two years or more of their life like they have been. I think that was a big part of that. They just got used to setting.
And if we didn't expand to the online, we probably wouldn't have gotten much response, if any.
For sure. Chris?
Yeah, this kind of goes, cycles back to the point about that Josh was making much earlier about immediate results and so forth, impact. And, I mean, I, you know, participated in the Terry First event, but the difference, I think, based on what, you know, what both of you have explained to me in the past, the difference is going to be that there will be results from this. You know, that people will be able to see something. I mean, Terry First was great during the time that it was happening, and then, you know, it kind of was like the circus left town and there were no more ponies. And so that, that's what I appreciate is that when you described having, this has to be implemented, we have to have goals, we have to have action plans. I'm excited about that because I think when people see, oh, I showed up or I didn't show up, but something actually happened, that that's what really, really helps build participation and input into the DNA of a community.
Super. Thank you, Jim. Great job with this. Thank you very much. I'm going to fulfill Claudia's wish that we're out of here before then and give everybody a half hour to get to Keller's thing, if that's where they would like to go. So thank you very much for doing this, Jim, and this is awesome. With that, we are adjourned.